Good morning, everyone. I call this Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023, 9:00 AM. Committee of the whole meeting to order and to acknowledge we are on the traditional territory of the Stahelis. I would also like to just apologize to the members of the public for the meeting being strategic planning meeting being canceled last night. It was a council decision. It's due to the the unprecedented province wildfires and drought conditions and priorities changed. I would also like to acknowledge that we have a new person sitting at the staff bench tonight. So I'd like to announce that the village has hired a new operations manager, Jace Hodgins. He brings brings with him a wide range of progressive education experience in local government with the bachelor's degree in geography focused on urban planning, courses in local government management, and project management professional certification, and most recently experienced as the supervisor of asset management planning with the city of Kukitlum. Please join me in welcoming Jace to the village. Next order of business, please.
The next order of business is introduction of late items.
And there are no late items. Next order of business, please.
The next order of business is approval of the agenda.
I have a mover moved by Councilor Fazio, seconded by Councilor Bydell. Discussion on it. Ready to call the question. All in favor? We opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next order of business, please.
The next order of business is items for discussion. Item A is strategic planning.
Thank you. So the purpose of today's meeting is for council to engage in strategic planning. Strategic planning is an essential process that allows council to set priorities, allocate resources, guide the work of staff, communicate to the residents, and measure success. The strategic plan provides direction from council so that the organization can focus on the most important initiatives and manage its resources to their greatest potential. The strategic plan will identify specific focus areas for the 2022-2026 council term of office and will guide the decision-making and work of the municipality throughout the term. So please allow me to introduce Mr. Ron Poole is here by today to facilitate the strategic planning process. Mr. Poole is our municipal advisor and strategic planning facilitator. Comes with us with more than 38 years of local government experience, and we are pleased to have have his knowledge and his expertise available to us today during the strategic planning session. Mr. Poole, over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, your worship. I hope this is all right, just the way we're set up today. I'll need to turn the mic on and off. Just in because I believe we have a couple people online as well. So if it's possible, can I get the PowerPoint brought up, please? So as the mayor said, today is all about council sitting down and planning together in terms of identifying what their strategic priorities are. Our session today is being held publicly, at least parts of it, if there are sections that we need to close. What I'll likely do is pull those aside so that we can have a discussion if we close that portion of the meeting. But I think what we'll do is let's just slide right into the next. Actually, I think about the thing here. There you go. So today's agenda is looking at a couple things, and we're trying to, of course, keep this session as simple and as high level as possible. So throughout the day, as we start discussions on topics that have either been identified by council or even the public, I'm hoping that we don't get prescriptive on those, because that's not the purpose of today. Purpose of today is to get those high-level strategic priorities and your thoughts under those on what you think are most important. Because strategic planning is not just about what we do here today. It's the follow-up that your staff are going to have to do in order to align the departments with what council said was important. So we're going to start with a SWOT exercise. Does everyone know what that is? Nope. So a SWOT exercise is your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And it's really to get us warmed up about what Harrison has in terms of internal and external opportunities, threats, weaknesses. For some of you who have done planning in the past, that tends to be something that's done at the beginning. As well, we're going to look at the vision, mission, and values of your organization. We'll talk about those strategic priorities, and in that session, we will consider what the public had said. So knowing that last night's meeting was canceled, we will have that presentation for you, and I'll pass out the information so that can be taken under consideration when you're considering what you think the priority should be. And as well, I've got council's feedback as to what they thought was important as well. After that, we're going to identify those priority items underneath those strategies, and those will be things again that you feel, for example, if infrastructure is important, we can't do 58 things. So you need to tell staff you need to focus on what is most important in there as the start of your plan. And then we're going to identify the goals of each of those strategic priorities. In other words, if we achieve them, what would that look like? So moving forward, you know, I like this little quote from Alice in Wonderland. If you don't know where you're going, any road will take you there. And often, you know, I think we underestimate the value of a strategic plan, and I think of anyone, the staff would really understand that because running an organization or even governing an organization isn't a day-to-day activity. It's actually about moving the organization forward, and if you don't know where Harrison needs to be in the end of your term, and even further, we need to figure that out. So the purpose of identifying in our first section here of strategic priorities is to identify and foster a common understanding of the issues facing the municipality. And we need to establish an approach to addressing these. So when you have council's priorities and you have the departmental operational plan put in place, it shows you how you can achieve those. Strategic planning is also about identifying those priorities to inform the allocation of your finances, to allocate human resources, provide clear direction to staff, and make sure that that is aligned both at the staff level and at the governing level. Because if there's any questions, please just raise your hand and ask, right? This isn't just about me standing up here. I really appreciate any questions. So as I mentioned, and I want to reiterate, it's not not detailing the day-to-day plans. Those will happen as we move forward and we dig deeper into where your strategic plan is headed. So we're not going to talk about services such as delivering clean water, picking up garbage, providing planning and building services. If we do, it's going to be at a higher level. Those discussions come throughout the course of your term as you start to move these initiatives forward. So the plan itself will identify key focus areas, again, to guide budget deliberations and in allocating what I would say are slim resources within the district. So you have finite dollars and you have finite staff. So the holistic strategic planning model looks at planning this way, is developing a strategic vision which involves the public as well as the staff, but of course, council, council's decision on that. Aligning and prioritizing strategic goals and initiatives and with a vision. You then want to align your departmental business plan with the strategic plan. So tomorrow, we have a full day session as well with the staff in terms of knowing how to tie in what is said here today into the organization and eventually bringing that back as well to council for endorsement or change or whatever the desire is. And then, of course, you want to measure and report results. How do we know if we're actually achieving what we say we're achieving? And of course, as you know, it's usually just an ongoing cycle. So principles of top-down planning, which is really what we're here today, we're starting at the top, is I reiterating these things, let's not get lost in the weeds. We want to focus on high level, not be prescriptive. Keeping it simple is usually better. What I find with a number of municipalities that I've worked with, and it seems to be now, they want it simple. Because it used to be that we would put all these things on a list. We push that out to the public and we'd say, look at all the things we're doing. Look at these 30, 40 things we've gone on a list. But don't forget, at the end or annually, and then at the end of your term, you have to show, did you accomplish them? So you want to make sure that they're doable, or in many senses, it might look like you're actually failing. You did, you identified 30 and you only accomplished 20, you know, 20 or 10 or what have you. So keeping it simple is really a smart way to go. Questions about is your community going through rapid growth and change? Should our focus be on core activities, or should we be looking at new and shiny? And we need to ensure that our budget is considered when planning. So your finance staff are certainly going to make you aware of do you or don't you have the money? And that's why I'm saying, let's make sure we're dreaming within that box that makes it realistic. So our first session today again is going to be on the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities and threats. So the analysis of these four areas is one of the first steps that I mentioned in terms of the strategic planning. Strengths and weaknesses focus on the internal part of the organization. So your strengths would be the district's assets, whether it's something physical, such as the scenic quality of Harrison Hot Springs, or something less tangible, such as the high degree of satisfaction for police or fire services. And again, these are just examples. So what makes Harrison great? Conversely, weaknesses are things that the district lacks. Things that we do not do well could be administratively, maybe we're not structured the way we should be, or things like physical aspects that detract from the overall quality of life. So what I'm going to do, and I know Amanda's helping me in terms of moving some of this stuff around, is we're going to start by looking at our strengths. So again, just looking up there, who would like to start in terms of what you see are strengths in Harrison? Yes. Counselor Fazio.
Tourism.
What else?
Natural beauty.
I'm just going to let you guys go. If you think of something, just again, it's like brainstorming. What do you like about Harrison? What's good about Harrison?
There's a, there's also a unique sort of ambience to the village.
I'm hoping I'm spelling things right. Counselor Jackson, and it looks like we need to use the mic. Is that correct?
Counselor Jackson?
Yeah, Counselor Jackson, can you use the mic? Simply because I believe we have some people on. I think it's this button here. Correct. Thank you.
Over the years, we've been able to attract very competent staff, and that has been a real valuable strength in this community.
Village infrastructure. You want to in detail or just general infrastructure?
Well, if there's specific stuff, unless everything is perfect.
Well, I was just going to relay on the wastewater treatment plant, our water plants. Reservoir.
Am I catching that right?
And and our flood pumping ability.
The small community feel.
Public communication.
Close vicinity to major hospitals, other major infrastructure.
Counselor Vidal.
Just further to Counselor Jackson's comment about staff. I do find that the communication between staff and public is exceptional, that you know, getting back to residents within a really good timeframe to help to address their concerns.
The village has been very flexible and able to adapt to the changing environment.
No, I mean, you know, you know what that means. Yes, Counselor Fazio.
Yeah, good. We have a, well, I believe we have a very good school system at our school here, plus the other side of it is very important to working families is our daycare center facilities that's attached to the school as well.
Okay, so I've got that straight. What what's the accounting system or something you first, what was your first comment again?
I would say the daycare.
Okay, so we've got good daycares and good school?
Yes.
Schools?
Daycare is very important, as we all know, with the working families. And we have an excellent one in the in the village that accommodates that that area.
That's good. That's usually a downfall for a lot of communities. So why don't we stop there? We can always add to it. The idea again is just to get you thinking about what's really good about the organization. And then, of course, our next one's going to be our weaknesses. Which, if you recall, is areas internal to the organization that we lack. So what are our weaknesses? What could we do better?
Better infrastructure planning.
Infrastructure plan?
Infrastructure planning.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Vidal.
Implementation of some of the recommendations from our master plan.
Overdevelopment of residential on Espinade, which results in many, many units being empty most of the year, which hurts the economics of the village.
Sorry, overdevelopment of, did you say residential? Please tell me I spelled that right. Is that it? Other than that, if we fix all that, we're all pretty good.
I think we lack right now, and it's one of the largest concerns right now on members of the public is to do with the interface fires. Another one would be is the water quality of our lagoon.
The water quality of the lagoon?
The inadequacy of our dyke.
Lack of space at our village office.
Recreation planning for pools, et cetera.
Mayor Wood, I forgot that or missed that last part? Just recreation planning?
I just gave an example, i.e. pool.
Okay.
Recreational planning, yes.
Counselor Vidal.
Lack of affordable or attainable housing for staff at our hotels and restaurants.
Is that all right if I just put it in general? Okay.
Just not in control of our hot spring source. Relies solely on tourism, no industry, no industrial income. Revenue. Have a highway that goes through the middle of town with many logging trucks. Heavy-used, heavy-used highway going through the middle of town. No emergency exit.
So pretty good? Why don't, again, we can always add to them later. Those up after. So our next one is the opportunities and threats. So the opportunities are positive qualities or assets that exist in the region beyond the municipal boundaries. Things that benefit or could benefit the district but are not controlled by the district. So whether that's in the regional district or with Kent or other, you know, the province or First Nations, those sorts of things are what are considered beyond your control. Threats are external forces that are or may soon become detrimental to the district in some way. So climate change is an example there. So why don't we start with the opportunities? Yes, Counselor Fazio.
Proposed aquatic center from the district to Kent. There's possibilities of Harrison being involved. Increased transportation, referring to B C Transit.
Emergency services.
Now, Mayor Wood, when you say emergency services, that's beyond the boundaries.
Correct.
And can maybe just explain that a bit?
We are, ambulance is controlled out of out of Kent.
Right, and that's good. That's an opportunity.
Yes. R C M P and fire. R C M P and fire. Extremely important.
Extremely important. Council Vidal.
A very progressive, um, the C to C, community to community forum, which includes ourselves, District of Kent, and local First Nations.
Just the lake itself.
What's the opportunity there when you say the lake?
Drinking water source, activity source.
That might be an internal thing to Harrison. We can add that on there. As a strength.
Strength, yes, absolutely. Water is liquid gold.
All right, do we think we captured the opportunities there beyond our borders? All right, the threats. What is, what do we see as threats beyond our borders?
Losing the R C M P.
So for my benefit is, are, do you have R C M P in Harrison? And there's a possibility it could be?
We do not, we do not have R C M P in Harrison. The R C M P is in Agassiz. The R C M P are paid. There are members of the R C M P that are paid for Agassiz Kent. But the village and all of our indigenous neighbors, it's, it's all controlled all through the province. We have no, we have no say in the R C M P at this time. And that is the government are just changing the rules of the R C M P. So I think it's a really important, um, aspect that we take for granted that we have the R C M P, which we may very well lose it. So it's a big threat, I see it.
Good. Council Fazio?
Yes, thank you. The R C M P is, um, part of its municipal, and then we have eight officers who are provincial, that's paid by the province. That's why we, we pay a much lower amount towards our R C M P, but there are eight that are allocated by the province for the areas under, like us, under five thousand. But Kent pays much more, they're over the five thousand, so they come with the municipal, they pay a greater amount of money than, than we, we do.
Right. How, how big is Kent?
Pardon?
How big is Kent population?
Well, it's got to be over the five thousand because they're paying a much higher amount. So I would, I've got no idea. I would, I would guess in this day and age, close to seven thousand, six, seven thousand.
Yeah. It's about four times the size of us.
Yeah, so they would get seventy percent of that shot. All right, what else is a threat? About climate change. Are we addressing that at all?
Nope. Threat to the quality of our lake, the water. The nature surrounding us, the trails, the trees. Big threat would be the density increase. Residential density increases.
Mind you, that might be internal.
Sorry.
That might be internal to the organization with your bylaws and your development standards.
Correct.
Or do you see that as an external threat? The province?
Well said. Yes.
Not trying to be picky, but again, it's, it's something that you don't control and that, that's.
Atmospheric rainfalls. Weather.
Yes.
We can debate that one.
Yes, Council Fazio.
Yeah, lack of medical services. I.e. doctors, of course.
Is Chillicothe your nearest hospital or is there? Okay, what's in Agassiz? Medical clinic, okay. So were we good there, pretty much? Again, we can always add to it later. So now you can tell we're starting to dive a little bit deeper. That was really to get your mind thinking and going on a few things here. So now what I want to start talking to you about is when we're building this plan, we need to talk about what your vision is, what your mission is, and what your values are. Now, I think we're, I'm still a little bit not sure if there was a completed plan done earlier. I know Kelly had sent me some information in the past, but I wasn't really able to find specifically if there was something in there that was nailed down last time. But we'll discuss that as we move forward. So your vision is, what are we doing? Right? What do we want to achieve in the future? Your mission, which is usually pretty clear for a lot of, you know, local governments, is what do we do? Who do we serve? And what do we want to accomplish? In other words, if, if you're a business, what do you provide? Well, that's your mission. Values, that's very intrinsic to what you think your organization is. So what do we stand for? What do we value the most? And how will we conduct ourselves as we achieve our vision and mission? So that one's all about council and the organization. So as we move into each of these sections, I've got some examples from other plans to give you some ideas. If we find it awkward to try and nail something down, what I'm going to suggest is we continue to move forward. We can always come back, or in some cases, like the last time that we did this session in Mission, they suggested, you know, they kind of gave the rough structure, and then they asked if staff would come back with a suggestion so that they could think about it again. Because doing this can sometimes be very, uh, not awkward, but at the same time, you know, everyone's wordsmithing stuff that after an hour later, you find you're still struggling with one sentence. So if I find we're getting there, I might just move us along so we can still keep in, in the planning mode, but uh, I think we'll do fine today. So what is a vision statement? A vision statement describes your company's desired future state in the coming years, or in this case, your organization. This is commonly three or five years out. It says what your business will look like if it achieves its goals. So in many senses, what you have control of right now is your term. But you still need to provide vision for future councils coming down the road. Because after the next election, your staff, depending on who's here and who isn't, are still going to have to be that calm that brings the old plan forward that has to be reconsidered by a new council. That's how it lives, because you can't start a thirty million dollar project and expect in the next term that it's suddenly just be tossed without considerable complications to either the budget or the organization. So those sorts of things have to be carefully considered as, as any council moves forward over the, over the election. So like I said, generally, three to five years. In your case, it's usually a four-year term. We're short one term right now, so we're probably looking at three. It should be clear, concise, and with a high level focus. And I've got some examples again today that we can look at on how other communities have, have crafted theirs. And a single sentence is the ideal length. A vision statement can also change as your business evolves and grows. That's the difference about a strategic plan. It's not as locked in as your official community plan, which really digs into the public, and there's a lot of work that goes into that. So in this case, you can always revisit it. You can always say, you know what, a year later, we believe this has changed. So by all means, you know, revamp these as, as necessary. So here's a couple examples. The city of Fort St. John is their vision. Fort St. John will be a flourishing community where nature lives, business prosper, families are active, and diversity is celebrated. City of Terrace. Terrace is an inclusive, affordable, and vibrant community with a strong, diverse economy. We provide a high quality of life with abundant recreational activities, easy access to outdoor adventures, and we celebrate our rich, local culture and proud First Nations presence. Now, you can see that's one sentence, but it is certainly a mouthful. And again, don't forget, it's a vision. It's not something you're going to accomplish every day, but if that's your vision, you work towards it. Everything you do on a daily basis is to achieve that. District of Stewart, I just wanted a smaller community in there as well. Stewart is a healthy, sustainable, and vibrant small community that has a diversified and stable economy where industry and tur- tourism are both thriving and growing simultaneously, while also respecting and protecting the environment. So that gives you some idea, if you were to read those, what is most important to those communities? So in our case, what is our vision? Now, the village, the village has a community vision in its official community plan. This plan was established with input from the residents, and I'm going to show that on the next slide. And your community vision and strategic vision should be similar. It would be really weird if your strategic vision was in opposition to your official community plan. In many cases that I've done this, I've looked at what a community said their strategic plan is, and I've looked at their official community plan, and often they're word for word the same, because they believe in their vision is everything and is in all their other documents. So yours, which is the current one, and as I see in the one that you're currently undergoing now, this has remained the same. And it reads, "A residential and resort community with an attractive and inviting village core of shops and services. A strong commitment to maintaining the scenic qualities, the environment, the quality of life, and the vibrant and cultural life, combined with a high standard of development." I'd like to start us there. Do you like that? Would you like to tweak it? Where would you like to go as your vision for this community?
I think the environment, I think the, the air, the water, the land is, is vital that we maintain it for future generations so that they can enjoy what we enjoy today and why we are here today. I think that that's a big component. And with this wording in here, with the high standard of development, I honestly, I don't like that, those words at all. Because high standard is a very big, very big word. I think it's important that the development, uh, is smart development, and it fits into, to the, uh, the protection again of our environment and the culture, uh, the residential culture of, of what makes people come to this village.
Okay, well, let's start with that. In terms of the environment, do we feel that we've captured that in the, uh, a strong commitment to maintaining the scenic qualities, the environment? And again, knowing it's a pretty broad vision, but we, again, don't want to divide what environment actually means. It umbrellas it. So hopefully, Mayor Wood, that captures your thoughts, though, that it looks like there's a commitment here in maintaining?
I just think that the, the word, the environment, should be a bigger part of the actual vision. The scenic qualities will come with the environment. The, the life, um, vibrant cultural life. I think, again, so much of that just comes back to the same word, uh, the, uh, the protection of, of the environment we have around us.
Okay, any suggestions on the word changing there? I understand what you're saying. I'm hoping that if you guys can provide some wording, because I want to make this yours, what you're thinking. For a change.
Well, we don't just want a village full of shops and services. We want specific, um, whether it be a grocery, a main grocery store, whether it be, um, some sort of medical clinic in the future. I mean, maybe that's getting too specific on that.
Um, you might be able to find a word, you know, whether it's a core of quality shops or, um, community or something in that line specifies it a little bit more without saying we need a shopping, you know, a grocery store and a gas station and because again, it drops the vision into prescriptive.
Right.
That's why I'm saying this is always the toughest part is cherry-mandering a sentence. Council Fazio, you had your hand on the button, and I see you've gone back. Okay. Amanda, can I ask you for a favor? Would you mind taking this vision and as we start working with some of it, maybe make the changes? Probably easier for than for me to write it and scratch it all up. Thank you.
I agree with what Council Fazio was saying. I don't know what the, what the words are to. We don't just want a core, a bunch of shops and services. We want.
Yeah, all restaurants and nothing else kind of thing. Tyson?
Yeah, I just don't want to sway his council's discussion, but if we were to shorten up the, uh, the, the, uh, the statement to "A residential and resort community with an attractive and inviting village core", and just end it there, didn't have the, the additional, um, or lack of better term, fluffy stuff. And then the second statement could remain with "A strong, uh, commitment to maintaining the scenic qualities, the environment, and the quality of life", period.
I like that. I'll second that.
Did you get that, Amanda? Awesome. What we'll do is we'll rewrite that, and then I'm What we'll do is we'll rewrite that, and then I'm going to put it up here um, and give you another look at it, and if it works, we're going to call it your vision. And again, what happens here today, unlike the official community plan, this is yours. If in two months from now, say, you know what, I'm still awkward with that vision, you can bring it back. But for discussion today, I like the idea. I think Tyson's taken it and kept it very high level without it getting too deep. Counselor Fazio.
Is it possible that, um, they could punch this in, type it in, what Tyson has just come up with?
Uh, we sure can, unless, if you've got it, I can write it really quickly. Sure. Why don't I write it here?
A residential and resort community focused on maintaining an attractive and inviting village core. Period. A strong commitment to maintaining the scenic qualities comma the environment and quality of life.
Am I seeing four nods around the table? Great, because this very much will tie in if that's where your official community plan goes. Good. In fact, I think you guys even went higher level. Awesome. I've actually had people walk out of this session because they're frustrated. So the fact you're all here, it's good. So what is our mission statement? If you recall again, this statement should describe the fundamental purpose of why the organization exists. It should be clear and concise, just like your vision, ideally a single, uh, sentence or two. And it rarely changes unless your business changes. And of course, you know, we're regulated, we've got legislation in place that tells us why we exist. So unless your business changes and adds a new business line or fundamentally alters its direction, the mission statement tends to be consistent. So some examples, city of Kamloops, our mission is to be leaders and stewards by tackling important community issues to position the city for growth, vitality, and resilience to best serve our residents. Terrace, through strong leadership, the city of Terrace provides effective delivery of core services to serve all residents of the community, fosters community pride and livability, and facilitates economic growth in the region as the service and supply center of the Northwest. Fort St. John, to facilitate a community that embraces opportunity, diversity, and sustainability through the delivery of excellent municipal services. And I picked on mission, uh, the city of Mission provides sound leadership to its residents and local businesses to balance growth that provides needed amenities, local employment opportunities, utilizing a level of responsiveness that demonstrates exemplary service and efficiency that is the envy in the Fraser Valley. And District to Stewart, again, being a smaller community, visionary leadership and good governance that balances the expectation of core services with available resources while respecting the social, economic, and environmental interests of the community. So what would our mission be? How would we describe what we do? Yes, Counselor Vital.
Certainly, uh, a prime mission is, um, delivery of core services to our residents.
Do you want to start with a statement? And we'll, we'll work from there. So don't feel that this is an end-all be-all, but I like what you're saying.
Maybe I'll make a suggestion that if the rest of council want to um, provide their input on specifics, and then possibly we can all work together and formulate
Sure.
a statement. That work?
I like that. Okay, so you want core services to be part of it. Okay. So we're just going to go with some thoughts on what this mission statement should contain, and then we'll try and light it.
To remain as a small community field.
Counselor Jackson. You have any thoughts on this? Yeah.
I am, uh, the problem I have with a lot of this is the difference between reality and negativity, and I find perhaps too much negativity so far, but I would say that to continue, the community continue to increase its economic viability is really important going forward. Because without it, we, we can't always rely on the provincial government for help.
Okay.
Economic is very important to me.
Okay, so as part of our economic development or because again, what you do as opposed to your, we will provide core services, maintain small community feel, um, encourage economic development, something like that?
Yes, ensure that the development that we do did, uh, bring into Harrison is that is the best economics for the village. It's really important that that happens for the future.
Again, I'm, hopefully I've captured that the way you're talking about it, but we'll work with that once we come up with this mission. Again, remember, your mission is about what you do. It's different starting from scratch, at least the last one, we had something to start from. Yeah. That's why each going forward, you'll have the last plan to at least look at it and say, does it still fit, or do we need to adjust it? Counselor.
I'm not sure if this fits into the vibrant community where you can live, work, and play.
Yeah.
Well, does that come to the small community heading?
In this instance, it, why you provide core services, for example, so that people can do this. That would be the tie-in I would see with that. All right, building pools, people can play, trap, it's so people can live and work. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you. I don't know where this goes into a mission statement, but I, my vision is that Harrison doesn't have very much land left at all. So to reduce the size of the go and save by three quarters of percent, percent, to create more land for all kinds of recreation, and at the west end of it, put a pool in, like a public pool for people to use, and get the hot spring source, which the line comes right down, es not anyway. That to me would be a tremendous benefit to everybody here.
Okay, you know where that one would fit is when we start identifying strategic priorities and what we believe are some of those, so don't, or hang on to that. All right. All right, Counselor Vital.
And I don't know if this would belong in the mission or the vision statement. But certainly maintaining that strong connection with our indigenous neighbors.
I did, I think I saw that in one at least examples up there. Does anyone want to take a shot at this? Or do, I'm giving you two choices here, or we could hold it towards at the end of the day and come back to it and try and pull it together. Are you up for the challenge, and then maybe we'll take a break?
Let's come back. Let's come back to it.
Come back to it? Okay. Time we got. Oh, ten o'clock? Okay, well, maybe we'll break at ten thirty. I think lunch is here at noon. Since, are you guys fine with a ten thirty break? Okay. All right, so the last part of all this is the values. Now, I will admit, in, if you start to look at different plans, which I hope you do, no plan is ever the same as somebody else's. They may start on practically the same template, but some places don't put values, or they don't put a mission, or they've got them all and they really expand on them, or they keep them simple, which again, is what I'm trying to recommend here. Um, as you get more and more of these under your belt, it certainly doesn't hurt if you want to expand on them, but I think it would be really good for us just to get that core plan in place today. Um, so what are values? They're the standards, ideals, morals, and principles that we believe in. So what guides us, especially at the council never, uh, level where you're a governing body, separate from, of course, the rest of the organization, um, this, this, well, staff, for example. Um, what behaviors do we value over all else? How will we conduct our activities to achieve our mission and vision? And how do we treat members of our organization and community? So some examples, for example, I pulled the ones that had them, city of Kamloops. We build, build trust in our council, organization, and community by being respectful, collaborative, accountable, purposeful, and optimistic. Stewart, these values guide the work of council and staff, accessible, accountable, transparent, integrity, inclusive, and respectful. So what do you believe are the values for your Harrison Hot Springs for you, for the organization?
Treating all people with the same level of respect.
What we're looking for too is about six here, six, because again, if we paste it with twenty, it starts to dilute it.
Integrity. Accountability.
I'm just going to say positive.
Okay, so positivity?
Positivism, yes.
Working cooperatively.
Yes.
Respecting the values of the, um, of the, uh, community staff.
Respecting the values of the community.
Staff, staff are referring to the village, village staff.
Um, I hear what you're saying. Can you give it a value? Like, I see all this referring to staff as well.
Well.
This is your organization. When you walk, when this goes out, and we talk tomorrow, the staff embrace these same values.
I believe firstly that mun- munis- municipal leaders are dealt in a different way than staff are dealt with. And in some organization, the staff have a, have a, a bit of a rough time with municipal leaders on how they're treated. And I think that, um, I mean, it, this is a sensitive
Yep.
question I'm bringing up.
Well, and, and I hear what you're saying, and I'm wondering, how I read this is, staff should be respectfully, staff should be integrity, staff should with accountability. All these apply to them as well as yourself. So unless I'm, I'm looking, what would that value be that maybe I've missed here already?
Well, I suppose, as you say, respect covers it pretty much. I, I, I'm, I'm just, I look at it a little bit differently, but you're right in what you've got there. I'll leave it at that for now.
Right, and again, because I don't want to dive too deep, I want to keep it. I think respect is a blanket statement for your organization, and it applies to everyone within. We're good with that. We can use as well, because this one was a little bit easier than the last one. We don't have to wordsmith it. We just have to pick and choose. We, we end up having to cut some out.
This humble communication. Communicate, yeah.
Is communicative a word? It is, thank you. That might be one that we could go two words, we'll see, but communicative. Because I hear what you're saying, have good communication, not just talking. All right. That's our warm-up.
Ron, can I just go, can we, can we just maybe go back to the mission statement again?
Sure.
I just have something, you were asking for something. Are we ready to write something down? And I'd just like to put something out there.
Okay.
So the mission statement suggestion is that the village of Harrison Hot Springs will serve its residents, businesses and visitors through leadership, partnership and the provision of effective and community focused services.
Now, I know we were looking at including these in there. Do you want me to write that down on a separate sheet for consideration? I can't.
Depends on the rest of council, how they feel about that.
Thoughts on the statement from the mayor? Okay. Mayor Wood, would you mind reading that again?
Sure. The village of Harrison Hot Springs will serve its residents.
Will serve.
Its residents, comma, comma, businesses and visitors through leadership, comma, through leadership. Partnership. And the provision of effective and community focused services.
I'll bet. You want us to just put that up on the side? We'll think about it and come back to it. Again, this one's the probably the the toughest, but that is a mission state or a yes, a mission statement. Counselor Vidal.
Just just some thoughts I would like perhaps to provide exceptional leadership and service to its residents, businesses and visitors through partnerships and provisions of effective and community focused services. Just just I think it's important to put in exceptional leadership in there. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. So right here, right? Just that was one change.
I'm wondering if maybe it should be further up, you know, to provide exceptional leadership to Harrison residents, businesses and visitors through partnerships and the provisions of community focused services, something like that. Just I I think it's important and it would sound stronger if we could at the beginning of of the statement.
In that this.
Yeah. That just my thoughts. Thank you.
So the village of Harrison Hot Springs will provide, let's say, if this was taken out, exceptional leadership to its residents, business and business and visitors through partnerships and the provision of effective and community focused services. Kind of the same thing, just. So again, the village of Harrison Hot Springs will provide exceptional leadership to its residents, businesses and visitors through partnerships and the provision of effective and community focused services. It kind of covers it all. Okay. Well, let's put that up there at the break. And again, when we at the end of the day just walk through what we've done, you can either rubber stamp it or again, do any more tweaking, but that's good. I thought we'd have to revisit that anyhow, so. Excellent. I'm going to let you think about that over the break. And again, like I said, we can still change it later, just by being passing it doesn't mean it's completely done. At the end of the day, I'm going to look for a commitment. But eventually this will come back to you to actually be adopted at an open meeting. So even at that point, unless there's big changes. You'll get that one last chance. So now we're going to get into really what is the meat potatoes of the planning process, and that is identifying strategic priorities. Some communities like to call them pillars, like the city of Vancouver or goals or whatever. I'm not so stuck on the words. I think most have chosen priorities as the the word of choice. But my suggestions here is to keep it manageable. Four priorities is ideal. Now, it probably seems like, oh, maybe that's not enough, but the reality is a priority is almost as high achieving as a mission or vision statement. So if you know, providing good infrastructure is important. There's a million things, and I think as we go through the feedback from the public and from council, you're going to find that umbrella encompasses a lot. So you're going to have to ensure or excuse me, you'll need to choose those umbrellas today and then decide what's most important under them. Because you've all heard the saying, if everything's important, then nothing's important. So we need to make sure that the community understands where you think the highest priorities sit because you cannot do everything. You do not have the staff to do everything. You do not have the money to do everything. So do what you can and make it achievable. So that's just what I want to plant at the table today. These strategies could encapsulate the important projects identified by council, public staff. So as we go through here, we're going to look at those that presentation I would have done last night. I'll do for you today. So you have an idea on on what the public said was important. And as well, I'm going to give to you what you said was important. The staff is basically what you've been hearing over time, right? Anything they brought to the table, obviously, is because it's important. So that's why I plugged them in there. And as well, I've told them today, if there's any perspective they need to give you to please speak up, because I don't want you to be making decisions in a vacuum and your finance director rolling his eyes, not that he ever would, but knowing why are they dreaming that way? We don't have the money in that budget. So just they're here to help. And then we're going to talk about what the goal is for each. So this was what I was going to put up for today, but I think what I'm going to do is ask Tyler. Are, do you have last night's presentation by chance? If we could take this down and put that up? And again, the feedback here is for your consideration. Right as we go through this process. What I'm passing out a walk through both of those presentations prior to us getting into the planning session. And again, what is my time? 10:21. Okay. So just moving straight into it. In general, there were 40, 43 online submissions received. Six written submissions were received as well. And only information required for the purpose of the council strategic planning was used. In some cases, there were a few comments that were made that I excluded because they weren't necessary for your planning today. User names remain confidential as per section 26 E of FOIPA or the Freedom of Information and Protection Privacy Act. And two questions were asked to the public, again, trying to keep them high level, get some quick. I mean, sometimes you can make these surveys so long that less and less people fill them in. So we really want to know, what do you think's important? So the first question is, what are the top three strategic priorities that you think council should focus on for the community in the next three years? And where do you see the village in 10 years from now? So I'll pass that presentation section. So this, the top strategic priorities in the first question for council to focus on was budget. The comments here were control spending and focus on the needs of the community. Create and maintain sustainable sources of income and earmark these for proper upgrades to municipal infrastructure. So they're looking at being able to invest in infrastructure, but you make sure we have the dollars coming in. And less wasted tax, tax dollars on embarrassing in-house bickering. Basically, what they're saying is just make sure we're spending the money where we need to. The second bullet is work together and get on with getting things done, restore good governance. I put in the end, if more than one person said it, I put it in there. So five people commented, that might not have actually been their wording, but I tried to put it that basically said working together. And I think, you know, we all know that I wouldn't be here today if I were if the attempt wasn't here and part of the strategic planning process exactly do that together. Let's start moving projects forward and moving the organization on to doing things. Another comment, a better system for pay parking. There's a concern about $2 being a lot to lock the dog. I take it that's what the cost is to park out here. And their suggestion there is a season's pass. Affordable housing. Three people noted that as a concern. Curb speculative real estate development. Absentee property ownership. End monopoly on hot spring water. I heard that again already this morning at this table. A senior living facility. Diversity in the types of services available in Harrison. Business bylaws is what they had in brackets. So I'm not sure specifically if they are thinking that maybe the bylaws need to change, in other words, to provide diversity. Increase public trust and create a transparent and supportive municipal government, repair cohesiveness in the community. Three people noted that. Clean up lagoon for swimming. For again, for my benefit, I'm not sure what that means. Is anyone here familiar with that? Three people commented.
Five people call it from towns at times.
Okay, so pipes in the lagoon?
No, it's not necessarily piped. It could be from animals. It could be from unknown sources.
Gotcha. Okay. Harassment and disrespect policy ensure the procedure by law and code of ethics are followed. Establish a medical clinic. Two people commented on that. Deliver quality, reliable and affordable public services. Use of the hot springs at a lower rate for residents. A food market such as Whole Foods would be nice. In many cases, I tried to keep the wording as much as I could. So I wasn't changing people's thoughts unless, of course, it was written in in a certain way. So these are areas that started, we started to get a little bit more broader. So I put under recreation, develop recreational amenities, parks, trails, biking, infrastructure, et cetera. Work with Agassi to optimize recreation facilities for the area. Increase public safety on the beach. And the example there was hire lifeguards. Public areas. For older kids, they felt a BMX track or a skate park would be nice. Pet friendly and off leash areas includes at the beach for swimming. So some people like to have their dogs be able to go into the lake. So there were four comments on that. Ensure green space and trees when entering Harrison and other areas. So these were specifically commenting on the entrance into town. Which was separate, in my opinion, from plan for green spaces in the future. Repurpose the waterfront exercise equipment area. Environmental protection was important. Three people commented. Improve trails for hiking, walking and biking. Infrastructure, so sewage, roads, et cetera, were concerned. This was likely the biggest area. So thank goodness you have Jason staff. Pedestrian crosswalks for Hot Springs Road, specifically at the end of Balsam to accommodate new development further up. Overflow parking. Would that be in relation to just down here? Because.
Beside the village off the snow, the empty, the empty land.
Okay. So what would this mean if they want more of that?
There was talk some years ago about selling the land off to and use the funding to build a new civic civic hall. It was a cultural, I think it was called a cultural facility. Cultural hub facility.
Okay. A well-equipped fire department, upgrade fire hydrants. Geo survey of Bear Mountain for safety. Create a safe, connected and walkable community. Tourism. Focus should be on tourists staying and spending money. There's three people that said that. A brewery to attract visitors. Market Harrison is a winter tourist destination. Good balance of tourism and community services. So I think they comment there was if you're bringing in some of these services, make sure that also the locals can can use them. Comprehensive business development to target year round tourism. Affordable living accommodations for workers. More tourist attractions to promote and support and support small businesses. Back to the development or or now, sorry, excuse me, development, which is different than the infrastructure. This was the bigger area, but closely tied in together. The official community plan, there was a push that we need to complete this without a comprehensive plan. Nothing will happen. Four people commented on that. A concrete plan for a safe and viable community. Control new builds is not to overwhelm infrastructure, so schools, roads, water, et cetera. They were all mentioned throughout those comments. There were seven people that commented on that. Zoning improvements for lot density and parking. Develop the streetscape plan for the storefronts on the lake. Growth the right way. More architectural guidelines, waterfront and community does not flow. Sidewalks new or fixed from Miami River to Esplanade on side streets. Better road conditions. Development continued, more cohesive look of businesses on Esplanade Crosswalk on Cedar Avenue, Hot Springs Road. Development of lagoon infrastructure such as bridges and walkways. Tighter control of construction and overall growth of the village. No coach houses. Thoughtful growth. Ensure that the community retains high quality residential housing and high quality residential neighborhoods. Slow down the growth. Preserve existing. Preserve existing single-family residential zoning. Third slide on development, inclusivity of indigenous community and future community development. Improve existing infrastructure before allowing further land development. Stop densification. Flood mitigation, dike upgrades, two people commented. No more chicken coop subdivisions. Developments with less houses and non-combustible materials. Too many derelict businesses in the business district and stop the use of highly flammable building materials. Probably the one that got hit the most, and I again heard it today, secondary route out of town emergency planning. Alternate emergency evacuation route, seventeen people commented on that. Bigger road in and out of Harrison, three. Community fire escape plan. Flood prevention, four people. Emergency planning, hire a full-time emergency coordinator. Fire prevention plan, including wildfires, five. And cleanup of east sector area and trails for prevention of fires. So that, I believe. Is what you have in front of you today. That you can refer to later as we get into thoughts around what you think are important. Now, the second question is, where do you see the village in ten years from now? Now, some were optimistic and some were a bit pessimistic, which is not unusual in communities. So what I did is I put the more pessimistic views in the front. The first was continuing to decline if council does not work together. That was in brackets, six. Overcrowded and denuded of trees. Walmart parking lot overcrowded with a significant decline in tourism. Too many condos, carriage houses, side-by-side houses. Village being destroyed by too much building and losing its beauty. Having lost its beauty with every new cheap-looking subdivision. An overly dense city with too many buildings, too tall without an escape route, fire and police protection unless drastic changes happen. And then the last one here, Litton, if we don't manage our emergency plan. So I wanted to get those ones out of the way so that we could start moving in and looking towards where the future should be with Harrison. But it's important to note that there's certainly some people that aren't, aren't happy with, with the direction and that's why we're going to provide one. So these comments, a successful resort community, and again, remembering where do they see this? So these are coming from your residents. A successful resort community with lake views restored, trails paved, proper fire protection, a healthy, open democracy, low taxes. Good community morale and attractive buildings. I would think that's the vision for every community in this province. Retain it small community appeal. Excuse me, still a village in ten years. Cohesive leadership contributing to a thriving tourism economy. Fully developed with a strong economic base required to maintain infrastructure and services. Enhanced weekend destination spot and viable community with amenities for those who reside here. A community with more condo dwellers and businesses to accommodate the new population rather than trinket stores. A vibrant beach community that can manage the influx of tourists during busy months. Thriving with all-season tourism and recreation in a safe environment. A vibrant commercial core with great restaurants, shopping and drinks. A lovely destination for many. As it is, but prettier. Double occupancy, strong community spirit, strong indigenous influence and cleaner streets. More unified as a community, more community spirit and less division. A world-class resort area. With thriving business, a grocery store and still attractive to residents and visitors. An active growing village with beautiful buildings that fit in with the rural aesthetic of the community. Maintaining the existing character of the community as a destination resort community, along with a carefully maintained year-round residential community and controlled development. Increase business center with better shopping for basic needs year-round. Increase in retired population and housing densification. A vibrant destination that can host visitors due to its location as well as offer amenities to its residents. Staying a village and not becoming a city. Harrison Hot Springs will be a vibrant village that boasts outstanding scenery and friendly people. A safe community with infrastructure to support planned growth. The village will have more residents creating different opportunities such as business development in the village court to support the increase of residents. Growth with new businesses to support the growing community, an affordable grocery store with a deli. And affordable restaurant options. A well-planned community with a functioning governing body. A modern village with effective programs and policies in place, which encourages and supports citizen participation. And finally. A vibrant and engaged community with a municipal government that works together in the best interests of the residents and visitors in a professional cooperative and positive manner. Finally, in my dreams, a charming diverse little community that is welcoming, environmentally conscious with. Buildings that adhere to the overall, overall ambiance of artistry, First Nations culture and scenic beauty. In my nightmares, I see excessive haphazard construction with no tree standing, they paved paradise. So your community has certainly provided you with their thoughts on where they see the community. And in my opinion, your community's vision rests at this table and where you see yourselves going. Can we go back to the? I've got four more slides that is now your input and then I think we're going to take a break. So when we come back, we can consider everything that we've heard and your own thoughts and start working on where we think our strategic priority should be. So you were asked, what is your expectation for the village's strategic plan? What are the most significant issues facing the community? And what are some of the most significant issues facing the village of Harrison Hot Springs as an organization? So the first one, what is your expectation for the village's strategic plan? The first is to achieve a consensus on what are the priorities of council and develop a timeline and financial plan to, plan to achieve these goals. Issues will, will always be significant, no matter what they are, but must be kept in check to the larger picture. You also commented on a document which will provide the framework for both short and long-term goals to accomplish over the remainder of this council term. Something high level from fifty years to three years, which realistically fifty isn't so hard. Because if you're going to tackle climate change, it won't happen in three years. But you can start the process for that change. The other two comments, they fit really well, but we won't walk out of here today with a framework and a timeframe. You will eventually have that when your staff start giving you the background you need to tackle these projects. What are the most significant issues facing the community was the second question I asked. What I would like to have is a detailed report on the infrastructure requirements in priority and estimated cost. Ensuring infrastructure is adequate and sufficient for our continued growth. So infrastructure right there, similar to what the public is saying is important to council. Completion of the recommended second evacuation route. Requirement of a new village office with expanded council chambers. A sustainable environment and development of a comprehensive climate action plan. Added to that, it is very important not to lose the small, walkable, safe community feel and new development should fit these criteria. Harrison has limited financial resources and a new development should be a positive benefit to Harrison. Change from a solely tourism-focused village to a tourism-community-based village. Development of a parks master plan which reflects the needs of our changing residents, I should, missed an S, and tourist population. And bike lanes. Also sidewalk replacement, sections of Lilawatt also replace the sidewalk. New parking gravelled areas need to be paved. Paved boulevards, Cedar Avenue East. Future use of Memorial Hall should be considered. Extension of water to residential areas still on wells. I hope I got this right, complete block three RMI. Okay. Lilawatt Avenue, rediscover existing designs. And interface fire, investigate use of old wells in community gardens. What are some of the most significant issues facing the village of Harrison Hot Springs as an organization? So this is looking at yourself. Council stability is a significant concern, steering away from radical politics. Cramped and inadequate working space for staff at the existing village office. Managing public expectations for service delivery. General lack of trust in local government post-COVID. Large senior staff turnover. Limited resources and funding sources for new office and changing and chamber. So looking at some design options. So why don't we take a break there? And we will come back to now starting to identify those and in the meantime, I'll, we'll put the rest of these up. So what have we got for time right now?
It's ten forty-two. If we are going to take a recess, I'd ask for a motion to.
For how long?
How long?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes? Yeah, so a ten-minute recess, so moved by councillor, by Dell, seconded by councillor Basio. Discussion, call a question, all in favor, nobody opposed. Passes unanimously. So I call this meeting back to order. Do I need a motion for that? I have a mover. Moved by councillor Basio, seconded by councillor Jackson. Call a question, all in favor. Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Over to Mr. Cool.
Thank you. So we will pull the. Oh, again, this is really getting into the meat and potatoes of where we are trying to go today. So we're going to start looking at our strategic priorities. And starting with identifying at a high level the projects we would like to see discussed. The priority actions is actually what we're going to be doing. After we identify our strategic targets. So ignore that slide, that's the next one. What we want to do right now is decide what are our favorite hard changes in Portland. Prior example. I could give you some examples of other plans or if you don't want to talk this out, you want to. So for example, if you know the collective's net of public information. Instead of putting all those infrastructure things, development things, other stuff, they all were taken out. Somebody talked about how we're building high-growth cities, you know, roads. Streetscape for the. That's all the elements. So instead of making these individual projects like big industry. I wanted to say what is important there, really people are concerned about development. So that could be some of our key priorities. Governments, organizational excellence. Organizational excellence talks about how it comes about. It talks about. That training staff, move staff sitting on the side there. Well, so we're both effective to say all that. So that might be one. So I'm looking for those high-level areas. Once we identify those that we're developing a project. Two or three under each that we think are most important. Because if we go back again, what we've got in front of you is the stuff that the public said and the stuff that you said. Let through these thoughts in your mind. But what's important for development? Because we certainly have everything that the public said. We appreciate their input that they see a lot of things on them. So we kind of start somewhere. You said elected, you have to make the decisions by yourself. So if we could start by identifying the priorities. That would be good.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the public for their, for their input into the, into the planning process of the strategic planning. There's two things here, we have a, we have an annual financial document that's put out, the annual report. And in that it gives the achievements and, and the, and the priorities. So I think that's something that's in the financial plan, I won't get into that. But as far as, we have some. Eight million dollars sitting in the top drawer in Mr. Schultz's office. And I believe that the. One of the areas that came up today was the public safety and one of them is flooding. So we received a sizable grant to, to do the whole of the. One, one kilometer of the, of the beach area that we had to raise by, by a meter. So I think that's a plan that should be moving forward. Also, the, the drainage on, on Hot Springs Road is another important plan. The, the building of a new office. For staff and council chambers, I think should be a priority. We're in a building that, that as you may know, may not know, was the old settlers' building. And I don't think it's the most viable place for our staff to work in. Especially with the type of washrooms we have there. And also the. The land that we have as an overflow parking lot that could, that also could be used for this building. It's a small footprint that I'm, I'm thinking of. And we could also look at what came up as one of the priorities this morning about seniors looking for downsizing. And the homes for them on, on that same lot. So for me, that's the priorities that. That I think that will take up the three, three and a half, three years, three and a half years that we got. To, to try and accomplish that. Those priorities, I mean, one is safety, one is looking after the, the public.
Okay, can I, can I stop you right there? Just so I can get these? So one priority would be public safety.
Yeah.
And just to clarify to the rest of council, what I see that encompassing is your secondary, your act evacuation, your flood, your, I think it was. Fire. Help me out here. Interface.
Interface.
Emergency planning, all those things I heard from the public and from you. That would be that umbrella and we will decide later what's most important. Are we good with this, at least for the time being, to note that as a priority?
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yes. Yes.
Next. Yes, go ahead. What else did you have on your list?
Oh, the, the, the. Replacing the, not replacing, but building a new office and chambers.
Okay. Now, again, these are what we were looking at for priority actions. Though that would be something we would do. What would that encompass? Would that be development? Would that be infrastructure? Would that be organizational? I'm sorry, I keep using organizational excellence because so many municipalities use it and it talks about. Improving the organization, whether that's the council, the staff, buildings, those things that affect how we govern. So first of all, do you like the idea or do you like the idea of an encompassing priority here?
Encompassing.
Yes.
The bigger vision.
I hate throwing words out for you. Would you, would you like organizational development? Would you like?
Organizational development sounds like.
Let's try that, we can fix it later if we don't like it or we feel there's a better word. And again, the things that fall underneath that, we heard when we also heard from the public and yourselves. I think there's certainly desire to have us moving forward collectively. You know, we're not, we can't ignore that, but at the same time, it'd be positive how we do that.
Smart building development.
So to keep that really high level. Can we just follow development?
Sure.
And that way it covers a lot. Development had at least three slides from the public, there was stuff that was talked about in council. Are you good with development as a?
Yeah, yes.
One of the the problems. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
The problem I have with the just. Term development, it's too broad of a of a number or. One of the biggest concerns in the village. Is their fear of densification of single family residential areas, otherwise. Allowing duplexes or other forms of. Increasing the density and people here want to retain. The single family residents the way they are. And make sure that in the O C P, there's no reference to. Other sort of added within it. Development to me is a generic term and it doesn't, doesn't satisfy me.
So do we want to reword it to sustainable development? Proper development, can we define it a little better?
I call it smart development.
Smart development?
Councillor Jackson?
The problem is that. It's like, in all due respect, what does smart mean? And what smart means to me may be different to a mayor or anybody else here. So. I would say development that fit, that fits the community requirements.
Okay. Give me a suggestion for the wording, again, knowing this is the umbrella. Right? This isn't a thing we're gonna do, it's something that's gonna cover a bunch of things we're gonna do. Councillor Vital, I think we're all on the same track, again, it gets into wordsmithing here.
It may be too broad, but in inclusive development. And what I mean by that is. Our demographics are shifting with more. Small families and newer families moving in. So I think we need. A variety of. Development. Single family townhomes. I don't know if inclusive is the right word or.
Right.
Or variety of development or.
It's always tough to keep circling and stab it, isn't it?
It's selective.
Yeah. Selective development.
Selective is that a.
Tyson?
Same as smart or is that more?
Well, here's another thing before I'm gonna ask Tyson for a comment. If you notice on the, on the side. We identify strategic priorities, right? That's what we're doing right now is this section.
So we're gonna consider council public priority, the umbrella. Then we're gonna consider the priority actions. Such as what councillor Basio said, if we're gonna talk about a village office, if that falls under the umbrella, what is it? Give us two or three ideas. Then we're gonna identify the goals for that priority. So it's when we identify, when we talk about development. That's where we can talk about a mix, our goal is to have a mix, you know, that's. Inclusive or what have you. We could probably define it through the goal. This one can tend to be fairly. High level. If it's helpful, why don't I bring up a couple plans? From other communities and and it just might flow a little bit better because I want to make sure that we're moving down that road, right?
The other word that came up is sustainable development.
Why don't we just say development?
This one also give you an idea as well, I think when we flip through the vision, you're gonna start seeing some of these. But they're all set up. And there's a flavor of what council, mayor and council have wanted for their plan, whether it's Kamloops, I think I brought Terrace. Sure, let's start with Kamloops. So. Uh, so you'll see they're fairly basic at the beginning. City council in the front there, vision, right, they drew that in their bold leaders. Yeah, no problem. I'm used to it. Bold leadership for a strong inclusive and healthy community. Up there and they also put. Again, that's your choice, I like it set up. Um, if we can move to the next, I don't think that's worth. Perfect. Uh, they drew their bodies. Like right there, as we work together, we've got a whole we can talk about that. There again, on a separate page of the plan. This you'll see on their website. They came up with four. Priorities. City account. Governance and accountability, livability, vibrant economy and environmental leadership. Because there was a number of things underneath there that felt important. So what we see there under the first one, governance and accountability, underneath that is. Their goal.
So what they're saying there is the city of Kamloops has strong accountable governance and makes informed decisions. Residents are engaged in council strategic priorities. So that's what they believe in underneath that priority. Same as with livability, the city of Kamloops maintains a vibrant, high quality of life for an inclusive, healthy and diverse community. We're going to have to do that later, so even though we talked about development. What is it that is our goal here? Okay? I won't go through them all and then what they've done is they've taken their. Uh, strategic priority, they've thrown in their goal and they put four areas that are still high level. But they're areas of focus. I've just called them priority actions, if you like levels, areas of focus, we'll change the wording. So asset management was important to them. Community engagement, external relationships and fiscal responsibility. After this, they asked the staff to bring forward, how can we achieve these within our dollars, within our resources? You know, hopefully on our term, but not everything can be done in in three years. So the plan only starts the process of getting these things done. Same with livability, they broke it down into. Arts, culture and heritage, healthy community, housing inclusivity, housing could be. Seniors, it could be affordable housing for workers, you're still starting to see that these, this stays really high level. But you eventually have to nail something to the wall as you get more information. To make you or give you the opportunity to make the decision. So that's an example of. Kamloops, can we switch to the next one? I just want to give some examples again on how the strategic priorities fit into the actions. I'm using stewards because they're a small community, right? Very limited staff, they had their vision, their mission and their values. They're, they identified four strategic priorities, economic development, there's organizational excellence again. Livable community, assets and infrastructure. Under each, they've identified the goal, so economic development, the district will attract. And support new business investment and partnership opportunities that will provide employment and encourage growth. Organizational excellence, the district will work towards leadership and organizational stability. That might be a very good goal that we're, we're looking at that. Livable community, the district will maintain and develop recreational, emergency management and healthcare services. To support and enhance lifestyle and healthy community. And so on. Underneath those, they identified. Well, four in one, five in another. So for example, under livable community, they felt they needed a recreation and tourism master plan. So they didn't say build the trail along the waterfront from here to there. Because what happens is you go out and you expect your staff to do it when the reality is they're gonna say, well, where's the money coming from? Are you ready for a thirty percent tax increase? So before you reel something out, so you're gonna do it. Tell them this is a strong direction we're telling you to go in. Do your best to show us how we can get there. Um, so they stayed fairly high level, they said there's a bunch of stuff we don't, we don't have. So a trails master plan will hopefully tell us, because he is usually good public input. On where the community thinks the best need is for for trails and master plan. So if we're being inclusive, that's a really good way to go. You have those plans, it was good that Tyson sent out the things that you have. So you'll have to consider, are they adequate, do they need updated? Or do we even have what we need to make? A plan to go forward. And the same thing under organizational excellence, partnerships with First Nations, regional district, increased public communication, staff training. And then they wanted to institute organizational reviews. Under assets and infrastructure, the only thing they were concerned about was asset management. Because they felt without a good plan, they honestly couldn't say what their priorities were. So again, council staying high level and looking at the vision. And we'll just go to the last one, I believe, with the city of Terrace, and these ones were just done, which is why I'm using them. Now terraces is different, I believe, in terms of, if you notice, terrace is twenty twenty three to twenty twenty six as well, they didn't do theirs till a little bit later. There's, can we make that larger by chance? Again, you know, I mean. I don't think this is as appealing as the others, the pub, this, this is on the website, so you really have to be prepared to read. Um, and I like, I like this stuff, I think the community, the public reads this stuff if they see it. In graphs and charts, it just makes better sense for them. So the city of Terrace, if we can go down just a bit, has those five areas as their priorities. So again, organizational strengths and cultural awareness, they're focusing that one of their areas is on themselves. Uh, so then they go onto the corporate strategic plan, theirs got deeper as the staff brought forward their department plan. So what the city of Terrace has done is they've said, okay, here's our priority actions. But now we've gotten it tied into where our departments are going. Because it's, or I shouldn't say where our apartments are, where our departments have given us recommendations and we've agreed. Now you've got everyone moving in the same direction, you've agreed to timelines, et cetera, et cetera. That's the expectation you should expect from your staff and that they want to give you. Anyhow, those are the, I just wanted to give you those examples so that we're understanding what the priorities are, that very high level, there's only a few. And then we're gonna dig a little bit deeper because we are, we do have some projects that I'm hearing as well. Tyson?
Thanks, Ron, I just wanted to. Provide an additional example from the, I was kind of Googling here and we have.
Perfect.
The Thompson Nicola region, regional district, sorry. Then is kind of similar to us and includes Sun Peaks, which is a resort municipality, just like we are. And they have five hundred statements that I think are pretty close to what would be. You know, close to correlate to here. Uh, the first one is livability and the built environment. First one is livability and the built environment. The second one is relationships and reconciliation, economic stability, sustainability, and resilience. The key one is emergency planning and response. And responsible governance and service excellence, which is very common I'm hearing through the other examples.
Yes. Thank you. So going back so far and maybe Amanda, maybe I'll get you to post these up here as we do them. So council can see these sheets. We've got public safety.
Organizational development. And we've got smart development.
Or did I hear another word? Sustainable. Who brought up the word sustainable?
Sustainable.
Sustainable? Do we want to try that as a? It still keeps it broad enough. Sustainable, like you said, doesn't nail the word down to specifically this. But whatever it is that sustains your community. Counselor Vital?
Healthy, livable community.
As a fourth one? What do we think of that? What falls under that? Sorry, Mayor Wood?
To me, it's too much more like the previous one, the public, public safety. I think that could fall under that.
What would fall under this that would be different from that? Maybe that's what I'll ask. Counselor Vital? Thank you.
Recreation, including development of Parks and Trail Master Plan.
Okay. So that does define it a little different than that one, than the public safety. I believe it would fit differently if we understand it that way.
See, and I would, I would think that the if it was a recreation facility or, I mean, that falls under development. Under the broad category. It'd be helpful when they're all.
Yeah, exactly. Because there is a bit of overlap. These are pretty broad. The one thing about your development, there was certainly a lot in it that was separate from the recreation side, like off leash and parks and trails and stuff like that. So I did intentionally separate them in the public input. Only because of just massive comments on, in those two areas. Counselor Fassi?
Yeah, Ron. Integrated Community Sustainability Plan, doesn't that much cover?
You mean in which area, this one?
Yeah.
It would, but that might be.
Okay.
Right? So when we get into discussing the actions, similar to what those, yeah, I would say that would be an action. That's very specific.
Are you looking for another one or are we still talking?
No, I, I'm just trying to figure out, is that good?
You think we've covered everything?
No.
Carter?
No. Yeah, protection of the environment. I think that's one of our most important assets is our, is our environment and we must protect it for future generations.
We, yeah. I'm not opposed to five, but you have to be, this is still your plan. Four is simple, as you see in some areas. Or?
I see that as one of the most important.
Well, could we combine that under your third one?
I can't see what the third one is.
Which is sustainable development. Would part of that be protecting the environment to whatever we do?
I would think sustainable development would fall under the, the protection of the environment. I think that one would be the, the larger larger one.
Okay. Do you want a fifth one? Environmental? Protection of the environment or environmental protection?
I think it's an important one, so yes.
Okay. Why don't we work with those? Okay. And then we can start getting in now to some of those priority actions that I was hearing from Counselor Fassi, et cetera. And of course, really what the public was giving you was those sorts of things that you need to think about. Okay. So let's start with public safety. So your thoughts being elected to council? The public's thoughts? What you're hearing through your last year of being on council? What do you think should be your top priorities in this? And again, limiting them to three or less. Yes, Counselor Vital?
Securing our second evacuation route.
Okay.
Fire smart community designation.
Beg your pardon?
Fire smart.
Community designation? Okay. Counselor Fassi?
Flood protection. Flood.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a couple of questions on here, just so that I can make sure this is clarified. I, we certainly heard a lot about that. Is there any question about that being on here? Counselor Jackson?
I'm not too sure. I mean, it sounds good, but it's not really realistic because in all likelihood, the way the wind's blowing, a fire could certainly overtake the second evacuation route of us up through Ruby Creek. From my point of view, it's the organization of getting people out on Ospringe's Road. It'd be the quickest way in the event of a real catastrophic fire.
Okay. I don't think that takes away from this. I mean, when all is said and done and you look at it, maybe that is your secondary evacuation route. Could be, I hear what you're saying. And I'm certainly, what I'm, what I'm encouraging you not to do is say, this is the route. Or this is the route. I think you want to find a route and when you everything, maybe it's the existing road in. It could be money. It could be lack of government funds. I don't know. But securing a second evacuation route doesn't specify where. It just says, let's look at it. Let's take it serious and let's nail something down. And in the end, we all support it. Fire smart, smart community designation. What is that? Just, what does that mean?
It means to me is a community, all of the new construction would be built out of specific fire smart materials. The landscaping would be done with fire smart.
Right.
Designation behind it. The fire smart could be and include the cleaning of the underbrush in, in a lot of our forested areas. So be proactive instead of reactive. Fire smart could be dealing with the campgrounds that may have hundreds of propane tanks, which could be hazardous. Fire smart could include also education to members of the public. Your staff. That.
Yes.
I could keep going on.
Well, and I imagine when you call it designation, there must be some requirements to become fire smart designated. I guess is what I'm looking at. Is there a checklist or something?
Yeah, I mean, there's basic checklist, but I think we want to become, we want to come a gold. We want to become a top level community because of where we live and because of our surroundings. It's very, very important that people feel comfortable in the community. And by having that fire smart, strong designation in the, in the, in the village here would give a lot of a lot of other benefits to the village here.
Okay, very good. What I was looking at here is I would just want to make sure there is such a thing as being designated a fire smart community. You know how bear smart there is? Awesome. Flood protection.
Just make one comment on that.
Yes.
I don't disagree with the mayor's saying. But at the very beginning, that makes a change to the building code, which is a national code across the country. So I don't disagree that we should be much smarter with building material, but we have no control over that. I know it's been talked about, but there's gonna be a huge lobby against it.
Yeah.
The rest of it, I could go for, but that one's, we don't have control.
Well, hopefully putting it at ease, that'll be something that will be looked into. And I think when staff come forward and say, hey, guess what? We can't change the building code. Or there are certain bylaws we could beef up to ensure certain things. I agree with you 100%. This, this is exactly, I mean, all these are good examples of further before you can actually say you're fire smart designated. So there's sure issues underneath there that continue to need to come forward. And your staff will likely put, where does this meet the public safety? It meets your desire to be a fire smart community.
Just gonna make a suggestion then that we change the heading from public safety to community safety.
Okay, we good with that?
No, actually, I like public.
Well, I guess community could also be public and private. I, I don't think it hurts that. The idea doesn't strengthen it?
Well, public, what public means to me, it's everyone that's, everyone that's here, whether you're a visitor, whether you're a resident, whether you're a business. But you don't necessarily are part of the community. So so that's why I would think the public safety.
Counselor Vital?
Thank you. I, I think that regardless of whether you're a resident or visitors, when they're here and recreating are indeed part of the community. Thank you.
And I disagree. I strongly believe it should be public safety.
Okay.
It's not, it's not just the community.
Counselor Fassi, and then what? I mean, if it gets down to it, we can just vote on it.
Would just, just with the wording, safety issues in the community, would that cover everything?
Safety issues? And get rid of community or public?
I call it public safety. Back to the first one.
What do you think? It might give that implication, right? Because what's the, you know, there's public and there's private, but again, what are you most comfortable with here? Community, public, or safety issues? What about community? Ands? This is a vote, you guys. What do you think? Okay. Public?
Counselor Vidal, can you just use your microphone?
Yes, sorry.
Uh, thank you. I think it'll vote for community safety. Thank you.
Okay. Public safety. Anyone for public safety?
Absolutely.
One? Counselor Fassi?
Still keep the issue there with the community safety issues?
Safety issues will be the next one, yes. Okay, so one for community, one for public. What about safety issues? Safety issues, one? One for each. Counselor Jackson? If you feel free to break a tie.
The way I look at it, the problem with community, it's a singular, public is not.
Okay.
And the English language, really, public is covering everybody. When you convert community, it's just the people who live in the community. That's that, that's where in, in a sense, public as a word covers everybody.
Okay, so am I hearing you are voting for public? Okay, I'm gonna put public safety up there. It is one way of focusing. Sorry, you guys. So the next one we've got is organizational development. This really revolved around that second question that I asked you, which was actually separate from the public because you're intimately involved in the organization. So in here, what is most important for, let's say, three action items if we were to focus on developing the organization? Counselor Fassi?
I'll be back to my original question. I'm going back on safety again in regards to public safety. Now, I'm going back on safety again in regards to public safety regarding flooding.
Sorry, on the last one?
Well, this, this come under what we're on to now?
Yeah, what we did is this is. Public safety.
Yeah.
Which is back there. Um, these are the three action plans that you identified. Within there.
Okay.
Now we're moving into our second. Which you said was organizational development. That's about us, it's about staff, it's about the village office, it's all those sorts of things. You're saying, how do we improve ourselves as an organization? I think I even heard we had good communication when we talked about strengths and things like that. Counselor Vidal.
Construction of a new, uh, village office and expanded council chambers.
Um, suggestion in terms of putting construction, do we want to investigate it? Or do we know we're building it? Because wording is everything in this.
Um, planning for.
Okay. I, I think it's safer simply because if you go out there and tell them we're building it, they're gonna go, oh, really? Show me the plans.
Good point, thank you.
And, and sometimes you may add on to something or you have it as a joint building. I mean, there's so many examples around the province. So, planning for a. Which is also why I wanted to make sure we were clear about the designation for the, the fire smart community, so we understand what that means. There's requirements needed to get that designation.
Did we discuss, did we just discuss the financing on this or not?
No.
No, okay.
Because we don't even know what our options are yet. If we assume we're just gonna go out and build it tomorrow, we have land, we have all sorts of stuff, is there funding we can, uh. Leverage, and this is my session tomorrow with staff is to talk about, here's what they said was important, even though it's draft and you have not adopted it. It doesn't hurt for them to start thinking about this stuff and bringing information forward to you so you can make that informed decision. If you are gonna build new, because there's so much involved with it than us just saying. You know, here's eight thousand, eight million, let's go build it. I don't mean your eight million, but. Um, just identify what's important under this so they can work on it. What else?
I would like to see something in, in the. Not the complaint, but a request for services from the public, um. And the response back from the administration. So that the members of the public that put the request in understand. That how it's been solved and that's been solved and there's proper record keeping of it. Um, staff can identify other issues from, from the complaints, just that a feedback system that actually goes. Right now, the complaint comes in and it's dealt with. And, uh, I think it's important that you complete the loop so that it's. It comes back.
So something like that, I would say is really prescriptive. I, I think it falls out of, I'm not saying it's not important. But that would certainly be an administrative policy, you know, if it's twenty-four hours that we follow up, how do we follow up? Here's a complaint form. If I'm giving you your three wishes, that's probably an easy one to bite off. Um, I'm looking still a little more high level. Right, whether that's, you know, staff development, again, because the new face is sitting at that table even since I've been here. Investing in yourselves. Things like, things like that.
So I would like to see us have a, a, a full-time. Fire chief, public safety. Manager, which would be new positions.
Right.
To look after, obviously. But then it kind of comes back to the public safety.
It very much does, and maybe your idea being fire smart designated. If we've got to follow all that whole list, it may come into part-time or full-time or something that now begs the question, who's gonna do all this?
So does that get written on this one or is it only?
I think it would, it would fall underneath the other one. Um, I think it's too prescriptive for this because we're assuming it will happen. I think it's a consequence of showing the need. And to me, that need would be, sorry, I'm pointing it in here, right? Via this stuff, because even flood protection may require an emergency. Coordinator or whatever, we're gonna designate the position, if that's the case. Counselor Fasio.
Thank you. Um, I think one of the other important issues is the planning for a, um. A seniors complex. I, I, um, accommodation and, and a res- resource center.
Now that may come under development or healthy livable community.
Okay.
As opposed to this is you, right? This is your organization. Do you want us to park this a second?
I think so.
Okay, it's not, as if we can't pull these other ones and we'll see. You know, if we can get your issues that you think are important out now on those, maybe it'll focus us a bit better. So the third one. Sustainable development, we have healthy, livable community. So that might be where your comment comes up or idea is the next one. And last one is environmental protection. So in this one here, what are we talking about sustainable development? Counselor Vidal.
A mixture which includes attainable and affordable housing.
That fit good?
I think it's, it would be a beautiful thing to wish. I think we've missed the vote, but, but, uh.
Well, if it is still an issue in the community, it might need a, I don't know, a different approach. I mean, how many years? As a C A O, dang darn near forty, I remember beating my head on projects that still to this day never. You know, came out.
I think it's a great, it's, it's a great idea, but I, I just think that we're.
Lot of advocacy here. Lot of this rests on council too. Lot of this is knocking on provincial doors and getting them to. To push money your way as well. Um, next one, Counselor Fasio.
I think, I think we have an opportunity when, when we're dealing with the new development, I'll use. Condos, whatever you wanna call them, or hotels, whatever, then we can insist on, on a portion being. Um, affordable rental.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's still an option that we do have, that we can use.
Right. Yeah, and you haven't yet. You haven't, you haven't used that option.
Uh, not, well, no, I think it was suggested to one development, like how far it went, I'm not sure, but, um. I think it's something, uh, the, the mayor is correct, it's pretty, um. We do have a range of prices in the community. It's, you know, I mean, they're pretty, somewhere high, a little bit lower, but, um, I think there's still an opportunity with new development. That we can have, say, one floor or two floors, that has to be for affordable rental.
Yep.
As we all know, one of the largest areas for rental is the, um. The, um. What do you call it? The, um.
Good.
For workers.
Yes.
Especially in the, um, in the accommodation and restaurant business. That's very short. I know several, uh, at least one accommodation supplier that's had to rent several houses. Just to maintain, keep their staff.
Yes.
Within, within, within reasonable distance to come to work. So I think it's an opportunity there. I think that should be left in.
Okay. Like you say, whether we actually get there or not is the question, but it certainly, I, I agree, I think you need to try. Even though it might be a tough road.
Well, I'd like to see, I know we use the word sustainable and I used the word smart before, and I'm gonna go back to smart development. Smart development would be using, utilizing environmentally, uh, friendly. Energy so that it's sustainable, you know, we're not having. Greenhouse gas emissions, reducing all of that. We're, we're reducing the infrastructure, the load of the infrastructure in, in ways of, uh. Reducing the natural gas, also the electrical demand here. We already know our main substations are at capacity. Or as close to. I, I think that we really have to start seriously thinking about how we heat and, and cool these, uh, the new developments. What happens with the, uh, rainwater that comes off the, uh, the roof? If it's all concrete, um. And where does that actually go as the, uh, is that rainwater repurposed? So it's back utilized as, as, uh, gray water. You know, and it can reduce our water consumption. I, I think that, um, you know, when I, when I think again about smart construction. Again, with our limited fire protection, we're, we have got some concrete structures. Versus some wood frame structures of the same height, four, five, six stories. When you add their parades to it, um, the quality of those two facilities are day and night. I, I think that it would be, uh. I, I think we really have to start. Again, by, you know, it, it's not just, we just approve a, a box that's gonna be put on a site. You know, the, the fire department needs to be really, um, involved in it, in the sake of not just looking at the fire truck and make it in. It needs a lot more detail to it. And I think that the engineers need to be part of it all to make sure that. The infrastructure, um, again, if it's a new facility, um, if all of a sudden we got a, uh, heavy rainfall. So there's a, there's a, an area on the property that actually contains the, um, the, uh, water until such time as the. The pipes and the system can actually carry it away in a cost-effective way. In, so there's so many components to the, to development. Which, which, um, don't even get into the aspect of, of the appearance or how it looks. We're working on our official community plan right now, and I think our official community plan misses a lot of these, uh, a lot of these items in there. So I.
So.
Don't know how to put that on this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's a lot, and, and do we see it? Sustainable development as opposed to environmental protection. Um, when we're talking about lead standards in terms of building.
Yes.
Um, I, I guess it could fit into both.
It could fit into both.
What are the thoughts? What, what, what's the wording? Thinking. I will put it up here, I just don't know how to write it.
That we go to, uh, that we look at, uh, lead, uh, lead status.
Okay.
In development.
Thoughts?
That's leaders and energy efficiency and design. Those are statuses that are given to facilities. Most government facilities will be done to a lead. Requirement. It's very specific and it's, uh. Very, uh, I think it's a very important part to be, um, as far as our, our development. Because we have to look at the development is, is, is gonna be easily. Large project comes up is easy here fifty years from now. So we not only have to look at it in the, in the sense of how it affects the environment today, but how it's going to affect the environment over the next fifty years.
Any concerns? We have a third. Topic we wanna add. Counselor Vidal.
Thank you. I know, um. We've, in the past, have had some discussion on, um. Developing, uh, consistent form and character. Uh, for any new development, uh, along the esplanade. So, I would like to see, uh, you know, included is, um. Developing that, uh, kind of, uh, policy. Um, that would ensure that new development can form to that form and character.
Okay, one of the comments I recall said to develop a streetscape for the esplanade. What do you think of that wording? It's kind of what downtown re, you know, revitalization uses is to put a theme through a community. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's where I'm going, although I'm not so sure that, um.
Too specific?
You know, when residents see the strategic plan of what they would interpret as streetscape. If there, if there's a, uh, you know, a different word or I'd be, I'd be fine with that. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have a better word? And I'm even throwing it out to staff there.
I, I like the word you've got, streetscape, because street, looking at the street, what it's, what it. What it looks like. I know that this, this is a policy which is, which is part of the requirement of the O C P, which we're working on here simultaneously at the same time. But I think this is absolutely, this is such an important one in, uh, absolutely.
Counselor Jackson.
Yeah, again, I'll look at things a little bit differently. If you go to, uh. Sustainability and affordability, you're gonna have to live with densification. Because developers, uh, build to make a profit. And all the items that were discussed here add to the cost of building a house or developing. So pretty soon, if you do all of that, you put yourself where, where nothing's going to be done. So we have to remain realistic in today's world. There are many, many things that we have no control over, we can't change, but what we can do. Is make sure that when we develop additional land that's free to develop, that we develop it properly. Which is gonna fit into the environment of the village the best we can and also affordable, because you know. There are a lot of people in this community who are seniors who would like to sell their house because it's too big and move into a smaller house.
Yes.
They can maintain and have their dignity, and that's something that we should be pursuing, uh, for the future.
And we didn't talk about that. I wonder again, that might be in the next one where we talk about a healthy, livable community. And that's looking at our seniors. That's, okay. Good comment.
Where do we put infrastructure?
We didn't really nail that as a topic, however, it likely would fall under here. What, what are you thinking? Mayor Wood, like.
High level, large, like the, um. As far as our wastewater and our potable water.
Yep.
Infrastructure. How the development, um, or the proposed development. Will affect the uh. The, the uh, future operational costs, capital costs of it. Right now, we um. We don't seem to look um, into the actual costs associated with it. The things, the projects start to creep up and all of a sudden then we realize our, our potable water reservoir now is. Is basically at capacity. So it's, it's, it's something that should be looked at, I believe, on a development by development based project. Not just looking at it, yeah, there's water on the street, yeah, there's sewer on the street. We need to look at it in a, in a holistic approach.
Okay. Counselor Fazio, and then I'm going to look at the wording.
Yeah, with respect to that, uh, wouldn't that come under the um. The re, the recommendations from the uh, staff when they bring forward the development? If the village is capable of handling another condo?
Sorry.
Or houses, whatever, whatever development may be.
It would. I mean, i- if you just step back and look at it, any development that comes into town. Would be viewed by your fire chief, your public works director, if you have an engineer, a company that you use. If you don't have one on staff, they all use a lens, even the fire and uh, police take a look at development. I remember the committee that we had in Mission had everyone represented. So when that went to council, it was signed off by those department heads saying. Yes, there's no issues because we built some pretty tight streets in Mission on some pretty small lots. Snow clearing's an issue, getting in and out with the ambulance was an issue, parking's an issue. Those things just come along with your process of how you deal with developments. So if that isn't something, then maybe that's in our organization, we just need to look at how we manage those. Because we're not going to solve what it looks like here. We're just going to recognize we could do better. That might fall into the organizational. Right? Because that's something that we have under our control.
So the engineer is, it would be a contract. So, so you're, you're talking about a very small village here.
Well, a lot of small communities do contracts with engineering companies.
But it doesn't, but a project does not have to go to the engineer. Or to other board of bodies unless council actually. Move it. Or suggest it to go to that body.
Right, now.
I think that's a big, it's a big loop. That's, that's part of the um, planning process. That just seems to be overlooked. So I just think at any development, so if we're looking at development as a whole. We have to make sure that our infrastructure is able to handle that. Not just somebody that just says, yes, there's a sewer pipe in the front, yes, there's a water pipe in the front, yeah, it's good, yeah, it's.
Yeah.
There needs to be a holistic review of the development. And I think right now we're in a, we're, we're in, in a dangerous situation where that necessarily has not happened. And all of a sudden, the community now are going to be hit with some large potential costs. And uh, it, it, it should have been, it should have been part of a, a planning development process. In fact, so that the, um, these large item, ticket items don't come up.
You know, I'll be honest, it's not unusual that communities underbuild. I mean, even the best communities do that. What happens is as growth starts to hit a community and you start to change your zoning. The original pipes you put in thirty, forty, fifty years ago, now don't reach a high or they're not sized for a higher density. Area that wasn't zoned that in, in previous years. So putting on a, you know, a. Two foot diameter pipe in the ground for a dozen people didn't make sense. Whereas now we go, oh my goodness, there's three hundred people that are be attached on here, it's undersized. Those things, I'll be honest, will always plague you. If we could reduce them, I think that's where we're trying to go. Because who knows in ten years, if the next council doesn't completely rezone things on the external part of your community. And all your pipes are suddenly undersized again. It's what you can put in the ground that you can afford at the time with consideration towards. Future development. So it's a, it's a bit of a, do we have the money? We still want development? And hopefully, you know, if you say you'd never want to be anything different than a village, well, then you don't ever have to worry about high density. But a future council may change that vision. That's the challenge with these going forward is yours is for now. So I'm, I guess what I'm saying is some of those may be the way they are now. Unless you dig them up, which you may have to, but hopefully new development will pay for that.
Most of the piping system, the collection system in the village and most of it, and most municipalities is done for a hundred year term.
Yeah.
So the likelihood, unless it's a massive rezoning of an area, it, it's not required. But what is required is the actual treatment plant, the water plant, the reservoirs. And these are multi, multi million dollar projects.
Yes.
And serious, serious money. So we really need to make sure that in the development. That we are ready for that type of uh, development in the area. It's not just, it's not just looked at by simply with what's visually there.
So here's my suggestion on that. What you're looking at then is long-term plans for water, sewer. Where once you adopt your official community plan and you have your zoning in place as well. That talks about the, the future zoning, somebody has got to anticipate the growth in those areas. To look at how big your water treatment facility needs to be, or are you considering a second one and, you know, as the village grows? If you don't have those plans in place, that would be your first step.
We don't have those plans in place.
Okay. Um, I didn't really look at what went to you in terms of master plans. I know when Tyson sent those out, some of them might be in there or no.
The master plan for the liquid wastewater and the water was twenty fifteen. So they're already eight years, eight years aged.
So should we be reviewing those?
Absolutely. And I think those are critical ones that need to be updated. But there's also, um, and I believe that the village here through the Fraser Valley Regional District. Who are contracting and implementing, I believe it's that G I S system. So we actually have a few staff members here I would consider to be experts at it. So um, that is an information system which um, outlayers the, um. All of the different infrastructure that's in the municipality. And I can't stress more the importance of something like this because as the staff change over the years. Everything now is digitalized and attached to this system. So uh, it's not lost in all of a sudden, um, one of the operations managers designs to retire. Um, and it's all in his head. So it's a vital part of the village and again, in long-term development. For, I think it's for a long-term goal. Um, I know the village has started on it. I'd really like to see. Where we are with it, what do we need to, to ensure that it carries on? So that's the stuff I'd like to see as part is, as maybe the, is the next section, next after this. Level of discussion on this. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that will likely come next when, you know, at your council meetings, things like that. So just to pull back here, and I'm sorry you guys, I, if, if I don't put you through that pace and make you define it, we got to make. Paper that it's not misunderstood. So maybe even to Tyson or the rest of council. The study that we were just talking about, is that a, a good step to move? To know that our infrastructure is. Ready for development, or if it needs upgrades, what would that look like in the future and how would that be paid? In other words, would new development be the ones and how would they do it that? So maybe this question comes off the table each time somebody puts a proposal in front of you?
Absolutely, yes.
Thoughts? Tyson?
Well, there's two ways we can do this. So we could uh, up, certainly consider updating our master plans. Because there are some of them that are, uh, they're getting a little bit older and, and maybe not as thorough as they could have been. Or we could uh, entertain as development comes in, which I think that, that's probably the direction councils want to go. Or you could put that type of um, long-term planning or impact planning, I guess, kind of on a development to see what. What uh, how much capacity it's going to take in a pipe, how much capacity is it gonna? How is it going to affect our water system? How is it going to affect our wastewater treatment plant, that kind of thing? But I think if we could um, the, the, the advantage of having a master plan is that if we find weaknesses in our system. Then that gives us an opportunity to go and seek funding uh, through the appropriate um, provincial funding uh, uh, sources.
Yes.
Um, and then also it will identify for developers if they're considering developing in a certain location. That um, where our weaknesses are, and then they would have to upgrade that in order to uh, accommodate their uh, development. So I, I think I've just talked to myself or so, maybe suggesting that we look at upgrading our, our, or updating our uh, master plans. Thank you.
Okay. That's a good answer.
And just further to that, the good thing is, is a, a bunch of our master plans are fairly new. But there are, are critical ones are the uh, water master plan and the wastewater uh, master plan that could require an immediate update. And then transportation, I think, is still pretty, I, I'm sure it's okay, but it could require a review. But we've certainly got our uh, new forest master plan, and then we have the old um. Forget what the one is regarding the interface fires.
Okay, so to just reel this forward, what you would expect to see coming forward after the planning is done and you've adopted it. Assuming that doesn't change, is a report that would recommend to you which ones. That staff feel you should focus on and what the costs would be. And that's why it's really tough for us to say, do it, because you've just attached a figure, you have no idea what it is. So the desires here, staff understand what you're looking for. Now going forward, you'll look at that, say, okay, that makes sense. And when they're doing these plans, will they consider this, this and this? That's when we start getting a little deeper. You can see how we start to touch the weeds. All right. Very good.
That got moved in the wrong.
Well, no, that one, that one we figured was in-house at first on our processes. So I think that master plan is internal to us. So plus we need a couple more in there. Okay, why don't we move on this unless I've missed something? Counselor Fazio, did you, you had something, but I think it's on your next one, healthy, livable community. When we talk about seniors.
I was making reference to um. The available land that we have in the village. Uh, that um, we could accommodate a seniors uh.
Right.
With um, like Counselor Jackson said, people, they get to a certain age, they want to downsize. And not have all the, the big gardens or the stuff, all those sort of things. They, they, they'd be quite happy in an apartment with a. Facilities there.
Yes.
And um, also a resource center. Because uh, I believe. We're, we're on the other side of more, more in the, the golden age group in, in the village. So these people are bringing up these concerns. They don't want to leave the village, they want to stay here. But they can't carry on with the um, the, the homes that they have at the moment. It's just too much maintenance and work. And if unfortunately their spouse is passed away, they're on their own, whatever the case may be.
Right.
And um, they, they, they need a smaller, a smaller, a more, smaller. And it's a central location where that land is, not far from the um, the amenities down in the center of the village. So that, I think that's, that, that should be something that we should be looking at moving forward.
So what's your wording on that? And then I'll throw it out to the group.
Does that come under community development? For seniors?
Or, or are you just talking about the seniors housing?
Yes.
Because now we're getting a little bit down. So I'm just going to put seniors house.
Same housing, yes. With a, with a resource center. Yeah. No, no, just a, as, just a quick hypothetical, say two blocks with a, a resource center for them as well there. They could have the doctor's office and whatever the case may be.
Kind of catching it. If not, we'll reword it Counselor Vital. And after this, then we'll break for lunch. It's the problem with not seeing a clock.
Thank you. Uh, in the past, whenever we've looked at um, improvements in uh, village parks. It just seems to have been piecemeal. So uh, I think it's important that we look at developing up works and trails master plan.
That's a great one. That's good.
Good. Another one? Let's eat. Counselor Jackson.
We uh, excuse me, tried this one before. I'd like to make Harrison a no smoking community. I think the time has come, go down to the Palm Desert area, all places in the United States with their parks, their beaches, everything, all non-smoking.
Okay.
And, and it works. I think uh, we back on to the four hundred acres. And our concern is people walking the trails and smoking. So to me, that's a high priority, helping health community.
Just out of curiosity, does that make your top three lists focusing on, is it a non-smoking community? Or public? Is there anything else that trumps that? The only reason being is these would actually be policies and, and bylaws that would come forward to you. And those are, can be done even at a meeting. I think we had one other one that we talked about, the, you know, getting back to people. I kind of don't want to do something that these take a long time. But what I'm going to do when we break is I'm going to list those two items on the side. For staff to understand that at least they're important to council and you could consider them separately. They may not be something you want to flag out to the community that that's the most important thing, being healthy. But I agree with you. I mean, I think you should look at it, but. Healthy, livable, what else can you do as?
Recreation, recreation facility.
Recreation facility?
Yes.
Okay. What do we mean by that? Like you're talking a full-blown community center with arena, curling rink?
Jamboni?
Pool?
I'm thinking of a pool that could have, it could be, could be a P three uh, project, private, public partnership project. Which would encompass some seniors living. And uh, it could encompass even a small bowling alley in it. Could be a curling section of it. It would be all privately, publicly funded. So there would be nothing to taxation. It would be run, nothing to do with the uh, with the operations of the uh, so of the village. So there's no cost to the village. Again, um, it's possible, we have lands that have been used. As overflow parking now that we can change the use of it. And you know, with a parking structure that can accommodate the parking issues that we have.
Yeah.
I just think we need to look at.
You investigate a recreation facility, like you say, look into without nailing it down? Comments? Counselor Fazio?
Yeah, fully agree. But I think with all that, we have to look at the village purchasing some land. For these future projects, because they're all large. If it's a parking facility, that's quite a large.
Yeah.
Not so much the height, the width. Not so much the height, the width that you need for the cars to do the, to get to all their parking stores. So um fully, fully agree with the recreation facilities. Uh but I think that we have to also look at purchasing, we're running three square miles, the village.
Okay.
So our land is pretty limited on what we can do. But if we're looking at something like this for the future, we should be looking now at uh funding possibilities to purchase land and it's not cheap as we know.
No, okay. Good. Well, that sticks. How about we break there? We'll come back and do the last one, the environmental protection. And then we'll look at the goals for those, and you guys have kept very much on track. So thank you. Is lunch ready? Okay, perfect. I guess, yes, recess.
We're adjourned. By Counselor Fazio, seconded by Counselor Vidal. All in favor? Opposed, motion passes unanimously. We're adjourned for. So I call this meeting to order. You know, I have a more, moved by Counselor Fazio, seconded by Counselor Jackson. All in favor? Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Over to you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you very much, Mayor Wood. Um just to recap, where we're at before we took the recess is we were looking at our strategic priorities that we developed earlier before lunch. And we went through four of them and we identified the goals that we felt were most important underneath those uh priorities. We're into the last one here, the environmental protection. And then following that, we will look at what our final uh goals are for each of these. In other words, what's our vision if we accomplish these? So why don't we go back to what was environmental protection? And I will throw it out to you to give me some ideas of what's important here.
Greenhouse gas emissions.
Okay.
Set targets.
Set targets?
Yes.
Okay, let me put that up here. Now, just to throw something into this mix, I, did Harrison sign on to the charter at UVCN about greenhouse gases years ago? Do you remember that? It was like ten, fifteen years ago? Okay. So that one in itself pushed you to commit towards that. Um and the province also has some targets as well. So is this I don't want to say too easy for us, or do we want to broaden it and just look at um not fighting climate change, but addressing it, which would certainly include this and other things?
Yeah, I'm I'm good with that.
Okay, Counselor Vitals?
I think perhaps uh development of a climate action and readiness plan or something, I don't know what verbiage, but uh climate action and mitigation plan. I think that would be a little bit more uh comprehensive.
This certainly should be part of that.
Absolutely, because the targets that were set, they were set quite a number of years ago, as Counselor Fazio says. And nothing has been done to date. And in fact, in our draft OCP, we don't even have targets set.
Well, and this really starts, even though this is the catch-all, this also grabs a few other things that is in the municipality's hands, whether building or, you know, fire protection interface, all sorts of things. And you can see where these start to overlap. That's why keeping it to four or five really is still a lot when you consider what falls under this. So um does anyone have any concerns or?
No, I. I think it's a great one.
Okay, Counselor Fazio.
Basically only what we can control.
Yes.
We can't control the world climate. This is just basically like um the mayor and councilman Vidal mentioned earlier on to do with development. How how new buildings could be developed or homes and everything else. Um more um electric um um charges, go all that sort of stuff which we are asking for now in new developments, by the way. But um yeah, this is only what we can control.
Well, and what's nice is.
Or try to control, sorry.
Oh, correct. I think what's nice is when you go to evaluate that, all those small things that we're not thinking about now will all fall under there. So every time that report comes forward to endorse something, this should be written on it. And I, do your uh reports now talk about a strategic objective? Because if they don't, it's, we'll talk about it tomorrow. Because what it says to council is, by doing this, you'll meet this target. You should always connect your, what you're doing at this table to your vision. And staff can help with that. What else?
That covers the pretty large spectrum of it all.
Does. That plan itself is pretty.
As as smaller um and I don't know if this is really the right category or which is the uh water quality of the lagoon. What what do we want to see with the lagoon, uh the future of the lagoon? And there's, there's thoughts of infill for a good part of it, turning it into possible park use. So a whole restructuring of what the lagoon would be used for and how it would look down down there. Um and there's, and how the funding. There's some, there's funding that's available. Was it from the, or am I funding, I guess, now that that has been just um, the projects have been canceled. Maybe that funding can be utilized into something into the into this. I I don't know how best to say it.
So for, again, me being the one who knows the least about these, the lagoon, are you talking about the the swimming lagoon out here, not the sewage lagoon?
No, not the.
Yeah, so that's the one you see out here at the lake?
Yes.
Okay. Um so how do you want me, give me the wording again?
I'm asking for help from you on that.
Oh. Anyone? Clean the lagoon, Tyson?
Well, I'm, it doesn't necessarily correlate to the environmental protection portion, but there is a lagoon master plan that we already have um that proposes improvements to the tourism side of things, like the the amenities around it. I don't know what to suggest. I think, I think maybe an overall, because we have the Miami River, that's another concern as well.
Yeah.
So if we could look at it from a.
Sort of a broader waterway.
Yeah, well, yeah, it could be something like the water quality or or uh uh in um environmental impact assessment or something like that. I don't know what the proper wording would be.
Well, I'd like to see this so more than just water quality. I'd like to see the use of it being being cha- look at changing the use of it with the lagoon. A good portion of it, yes.
Okay, so that might be something different than cleaning it up. You're talking about changing the use. Again, pardon me, is it a, right now for swimming? The lagoon, okay.
Yeah, it's classified as as a of natural body of water because it is, it is indirectly connected to the lake. But there is environmental considerations around if there was a consideration to fill it in or something like that, that would have to there uh would require a a an assessment most likely from the province, or we'd have to engage a QEP anyways. But um I think that almost sounds like a um a master plan idea for like an environmental impact master plan or something that we could address every um like we can a- address the lagoon, we could address the waterfront, we could address the Miami River, the slough, all of the water or or um kind of environmental impact study or something like that, I don't know.
I can see that one for the Miami River, so we can start with that one then.
Okay.
For an environmental review of the Miami River. And the the other one, I know that there's already master um master reports on the lagoon here. I think where there's enough reports that have been done on the lagoon here. So I'm really not looking for another report on it, rather than looking at the uh the uh change of use of it of of a portion of the uh lagoon.
Okay, do you want me just to put investigate? The the change or?
Investigate the the closure of a portion of the uh lagoon.
Okay, Counselor Vital?
Maybe a more broader uh idea would be a um uh review of of the lagoon master plan? An update as needed or required or?
That same thing?
No, the lagoon master plan has been done and it's got a totally different function of of this. This is very specific. Um and the other is is ideas of bridges and it's 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 not what I'm not what I'm looking at. So again, what the the wording was, the closure of a portion of the lagoon and transfer it into a a park.
How about that? Because right now, we're not sure what it would be. I know there's ideas, but I think then we're getting so deep that we might be nailing ourselves on it. Discussion, Counselor Jackson.
Yeah. Excuse me, I believe the original Schellenberg report that came out probably a long time ago, it seems to me uh was to reduce the size of the lagoon substantially. So at the the west end of it, it developed into a very nice pool. Even perhaps if the money was available to make it up use of the hot water, hot, you know, and make it into a very nice tourist attraction. Uh and you'd have free up all this land there for recreation or pictics or people coming who live here.
Okay.
The way the lagoon is now, it is a negative. Waters, less water in the lagoon, it's getting staler and staler and staler. It should have been done a long time ago, but we can't, would have, should have. We have to do it now.
Right.
To me, it is the top priority.
Okay. Um so going back to this wording, is that our focus on this? Am I capturing it? Investigate the closure of a portion of the lagoon because it sounds like that's doing something different. Counselor Vital?
How about something more like um exploring the repurposing of a portion of the lagoon? Closure to me indicates that nothing else would be done, so.
I don't think it takes away from the idea of a closure. But it's keeping the options open. What is that best use, again, without nailing it? And even that didn't nail it. It said investigate it. So I think you're safe um with the rewording.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson.
Uh developing an action plan. Which is to me is then you're going to do something.
Thoughts? Before I change this the third time, are you good with that, developing an action plan?
I.
For a portion of the lagoon?
I would support that. I think it puts more emphasis on now. Like we're not just exploring it, now it's developing it.
Okay. Counselor Faso- Fasio, Counselor Vital? You're the other two on this council.
I'm fully in agreement with no, didn't know disagreement, but
Yeah.
I think the one main factor in all this is the birds that have been here before we came here. The geese. And that's one of the biggest problems, whether the lagoon is size of a swimming pool or whether it's left the size it is now. That that's that's an area that has to be addressed as well because over the course of the spring and summer, or more this, when we got into the summer months. If you looked at the stats comparing the lake uh and the lagoon, the lake was a higher count in in Rendell Park and the one opposite the Black Forest and the lagoon was at certain times of the year.
Right.
I think that that is another major problem is 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 that the birds who love this area uh and um that is a big problem to deal with that situation in the lagoon many years ago. When I was on the Beach and Parks Committee, the only thing that would take care of that was copper sulfate. But the environment would not allow that to be used in there. The previous administration to myself came after me threw the blue bags in there. That didn't do nothing. Something they use in Alberta to clean up the the water. Uh it's um and the weeds, we've had that drained. So I've been here twice, once by the army, once by the um Sandcastle people to um get rid of the weeds, which is a major problem. That's a big problem. Uh we've had unfortunate drownings there where a a body wasn't found for four days within those weeds.
Well.
So it's it's a, it's an issue that should be made smaller, the area. I mean, the out- the outer, we could use it for for entertainment or for um other, you know, other sports of some kind. I totally agree with that. It should be made smaller. But um consideration has to be taken into account of the the surrounding environment of the migrating uh geese as well.
Okay, so if we look at what's here or develop an action plan, either way, those things are going to come out in that. So what's your preferred wording? Develop an action plan or explore the repurposing?
I'm divi- I'm with Counselor Jackson.
Okay, Counselor Fazio? Well, the wording as it stands, explore the repurposing or develop an action plan, the way it is? Okay?
No. No. Developing.
An action plan.
Okay, you're good with that, Counselor Vital? Tyson?
Yeah, I was just going to say, because there's uh so many unknowns, whether, like even if the province would allow us to do so, there I I was going to suggest that stay with um explore because there's going to be a lot of work that needs to be done in advance of even considering that. Um but developing an action plan, I guess, would still fall under that because it's still going to require the the exploration part of it, yeah. And then we'd have to report back to council whether it can or can't be done.
Exactly. So hopefully, your action plan is one that you could do, and if it means.
Yeah, and if it can.
Okay.
I think it sets more of a priority to it in the work. I think it sets more of a priority to it in the work. I think it's good.
So those right now are your three priorities under that? Okay, if I can ask, what's with the Miami River? As you're looking at environmental review, is there concerns upstream or in town?
There's a lot of infiltration that starts on the farmlands. So there's a lot of fertilizers, chemicals that come into it. Most of the rainwater from people's homes from their roofs are all diverted into the, this river. There's a lot of potential pollutants. We, we have no filtration on any of the outfalls that go into the Miami River, so there's a number of things that we can work on to to clean up the quality of it.
So the third section here now that we're looking at, as I mentioned, is looking at the goals. Tyler, can you bring up the PowerPoint, I probably should have been referring to this as we moved along. So we passed the priority actions, but let me just go through this so we can understand maybe what we just did or should have done. Identify at a high level the projects you'd like to see discussed or investigated under each of these priorities that we just did. We kept it to three or three or four. Do not be prescriptive, that's where you saw me stop you to say, well, we need to do this and this, because we dive too deep, we forget to, to see what's out there. So I put today is about identifying what we see as important, not the final process to get things done. Because it will take much longer than a one day session to get council and onboard with a collective direction on each issue, so the fact that we're agreeing that these are important, it's a perfect first step in, in strategic planning. Then staff will use these ideas, as I mentioned, to develop operational plans that take into account budget capacity, previous studies, grant funding, et cetera. And those are the things that are missing today, is why we can't put a period at the end of everything. So let's move to the next slide. So what we want to talk about here is a goal for each strategic priority, so we, again, we want to think high level. What is our ultimate goal in achieving this strategic priority? In other words, what do we hope to accomplish by completing it? So that's what I'm going to ask you for each of these five strategic priorities. So you'll see the first one, priority action is safe, public safety. We said we want to secure a second evacuation route, we want to be a fire, we want to be fire smart community designated, and we want flood protection. What is our goal in doing that? That's what I'm looking from you. Always understand why you're doing these things, what ultimately is the reason?
The public save.
Exactly, so we want to ensure public safety. This is where you get to dream and put your little thinking caps on a nice goal that you tell the public that we are concerned about their safety. So I'm hearing ensure public safety. I guess you could keep that as a simple goal. Does anybody want to add to it?
Sure, and public health and safety. Counselor Vital.
I think we also want to enhance it. Not just as, can't remember the wordage you used wrong, but I think if we're able to achieve any of these goals, we'll also be enhancing public safety.
Just going to throw something up and then we'll work from there. Maybe that sounds a bit odd, but what do you think, Counselor Jackson? You usually piped in there.
Well, I'd like to see reducing the public's anxiety by communicating with them that there are these action plans in place for the future. To me, right now, there's a tremendous amount, tremendous amount of anxiety about what's happening. And it's until such time as the fires and are gone, they'll be diverted to something, it's just the way society is now. But if we can do that, we'll make a real public contribution.
Okay. So what's your suggested wording to turn that into a goal?
Well, that, that's a very broad statement. Ensure public safety, we, we have, we're, we're in the process of doing that now.
Yep.
It's just a matter of what, what we can do in the future, and that is to make sure that we communicate really well with the public. That we have their backs and we're moving to this. I don't know what you say, safety, I don't know if it's the right word or not, though.
Okay.
Ensure and enhance public safety, sorry, I lost my thought there. Ensuring or?
I mean, it could be fine the way it is, if you're, you know, sometimes simple is best. Because the more we say for our, you know, residents, and somebody says, yeah, but what about the tourists, oh yeah, what about, you know, so it could be just as simple as that. Okay, let's try it, and again, at the end here, which will actually be soon, we'll walk through all this again, so if you get a second thought on something, you say, let's tweak that, we'll do it, okay? So what's our goal for organizational development? When we've identified as planning for a new village office and updating master plans as our focus. What would we accomplish? If we achieve this, or what's our goal in achieving this?
I don't support, first of all, the planning for a new village office, so I, I don't even know why that's on there.
Well, I think that one there is also not nailing that you're building it. It's talking about planning, but as that process happens, you have to decide if you can or can't do it, does it make sense? That's what I'm trying to say, nothing here is committing you to anything. It's getting you to do stuff to commit somewheres down the road.
I don't, I don't see even the need for the planning of the village office, there's already plans in place that were suggested, and I don't think that they're, they're feasible for a village of our size. I, I don't understand, I don't even see it even being looked at.
Okay. Counselor Vital?
Provide for the needs of a growing community.
Is that a good goal for that?
Well, when, when you've got up here the update, I'm, I'm still confused even with these ones that are on the priority actions. So even the update of the master plans.
So, yeah, so organizational development was about yourself. And so these, in a sense, are internal to the organization, so the village office would be something in order for you to have more room, provide, I'm assuming, better service, et cetera. Updating master plans, my understanding was that we were looking at water, sewer, infrastructure that the municipality owns.
There's about five master plans, I believe.
What would likely happen is, if you're asking me to look ahead, staff would make recommendations, which one should be the priorities, where the money could come from, and the time to do it, so you might need to update them all, but you certainly couldn't do them all at once. Just because of the time involved in doing them.
I just don't see how it correlates with provide for the need of a growing community.
Well, I think in that instance, if I can go back on the comments of making sure that our development, you know, that our pipes are sized right, that our infrastructure is in place, I'm assuming that's reflecting that your community is growing.
Yes, see, I don't see that as, as the word growing, but I understand what you're saying. You're going to have to develop.
However, that's your guys', I don't want to shove words in your mouth, but.
I'm just not happy with the wording of that whole the whole thing, I just don't know if it should be called organizational development.
Are there any other thoughts on that? I mean, we can stop and pause if we have a concern about that strategy or priority.
Yeah, I just, I just personally don't really understand what it, it just doesn't make sense to me.
I think, well, again, the planning would be so you have that discussion. I noticed, if you want to take a look at your comments in there, I note that it was brought up.
I don't believe that. A hard time believing that that many people would request a new village office. I don't support that whatsoever.
Okay, do you guys want it removed, Counselor Jackson?
No, I take the opposite view.
Okay.
We're in a, a different century right now, we're working, our staff is working in conditions that they really shouldn't be working. Washrooms, it's all, it's, it's all very, very bad. And that the, when you provide a new building for the community, like we have a new tourist building just built and that looks beautiful, we need to have positive contribute to this village. And getting that done, we can do that, we could probably do it for pretty, we, we may have enough cash right now to do it, and I, we'll get it very easily. Interest rates will come down in the near future, we'll be able to finance it. But you, you need to look to the future, staying in that little building that we're in is not it. You know, that has to be a priority of getting something new. And, and I think the, the people were really back at, not a big one, it's something four or five, six million dollars, something, maybe a million and a half dollars. That, to me, has to be in there.
Counselor Fassio?
I, I agree 100%, I've I've been in that office since 1993. And I think it's, it's got to the point with the technology that we have nowadays that what used to be a broom closet ended up as an office in that building, it's, I, I think it's detrimental to the health and safety of our staff and our residents when they come in there. It's, it's, to me, it's not a healthy environment when you have two washrooms which are right next door to where people are bending down to look at filing cabinets, putting out files. It's, it was a nice donation to the village, it, I don't say it should be torn down, if we do something different that can be rented out to other, other groups, but we definitely need some environment where the, and in this day and age, and I agree with it, workers have certain expectations when they come to work. Few years ago, we had an environmental inspection to deal with the, the, the basement of that place. We're wondering why people were getting sick in, in the office, and that was one of the reasons, so it was all cleaned out. It's, it's just it, it's, it, it works okay, okay, it works okay, but with, with like Counselor Jackson said, the village is growing. One of the CAOs that we used to have there, who worked for 34 years at District of Chilliwack, City of Chilliwack, said, per capita, we have more people coming to the village office than they did in Chilliwack. For whatever reason, and that's good, there's nothing wrong with that, but we have to, we'd be expected to give them the service that they need, and we're getting more demand for service from the public that came up earlier this morning in regards to communication. And as the mayor said, to give people more feedback from their complaints, whatever the case may be, this takes staff time. If we have to increase the staff to deal with these things, we need a larger facility. The footprint can be very small, doesn't have to be big, it can be tall, but it's, it's something I think that we, we definitely need in the community. The health and safety is an important thing in all communities.
Okay.
I'm, I'm absolutely opposed to it, I think it's the most wasteful amount of taxpayers' money, what was looked at there a number of years ago would have been close to four and five million dollars. It would have been probably easy looking over six million dollars for, for a new facility there. As far as a village office space, there is and should be some looking into a public-private partnership, which encompasses, and I've said before, is this entire overflow parking area, the land, the area that we just finished building, the tourism facility, all of that should be, should be looked at as a holistic project, including the school ground next to it and the existing fire hall. So we need to quit looking at these little tiny things and just, we added a a tourism building there, and it's, it's a nice building that's there, but it's put in the wrong spot. It should never have been, it should never have been put there. So I think, again, we need to sit back and look at that in a, in a big picture. And I can see that mixed in with the, again, with the fire department, I can see it mixed in with residential use, it can even have the seniors' use, it can have recreation facilities into it. It can even possibly have our hot springs, the water source tied into it. It's endless, and I think it's a, a project which is, which would be an ambitious, ambitious project. But again, I think it's something that we should be looking at in a holistic picture, instead of just keep adding these little buildings.
Okay, Mayor Wood, I don't think that denies that option. That very well could be, as you start to look at everything else that was added here.
I think it's very vague, I think it should.
Well, we don't want it to be prescriptive.
Well, I think it needs to be.
Or else we're building it.
I think, I think it needs to be, so it shouldn't say new village office. It should, it should say that the new village facility, what was that? Instead of pertaining it to an office, because it's not one item.
Well, if, if I'm looking at it right, I think the reason is because of the office, but could it be combined with something else? I don't think that's an option that's being thrown out here.
It definitely is not the reason for the office. It's, 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 there's no question to me, it's not for the office, there's a lot of recreational use.
Yep.
That land was supposed to have been, once we got to a certain population, and that was supposed to be for community use. So it's, it's to, to not utilize it for, for really what it was intended, and I guess that would have probably been in the strategic plan many years ago. So luckily those, whoever it was back in the day managed to save us that land. Because without that land now, we wouldn't have this opportunity to be able to build what we are, what we would envision. But, but I just don't want to focus here on just the new village office.
Okay, now I've got three that want it, so it's tough for me to remove it, Counselor Fassio?
I don't want to remove, but I think all options are on the table when staff come to us with their recommendations. I'm sure they will give us a, a ideas of what can be achieved and the financial considerations regarding. and the financial, um, considerations regarding that. So the options are there, whether it can be, whether a portion can be done on year one or year two, and next portion year three or year four, and maybe accomplish a larger complex. This could be the start of something.
Yes.
That, you know, we had the land there, which originally was purchased in ninety-three as a, as a civic center.
Mm-hmm.
That was a word that was used then, uh, from the resort hotel. Um, so we do have, at least have that piece of land that belongs to us.
Okay.
And paid for, I believe, or now. Um, so I think options will come forward from our staff, as long as they get direction to, um, to, to look at what can be done and how we can, we can phase it through the, through the years. Thank you.
Okay.
And I strongly disagree, because again, it's got the word village office. It should be, it should not be village office. It should be new village center, something for the community, not for the staff.
I think the staff have a really good idea where the thoughts are on this. I know there's the need for an office, which is what I'm hearing from council. But I'm also hearing that it could be standalone or could be part of another complex. So I think those are options that we're looking at, not just the standalone village office. Am I correct on that, that we're looking for those types of options for council?
Council has just been advised from village staff a number of months ago that they did not need more office space. And that was not their concern. So if it isn't the village administration's, uh, concerns, I don't see why council are trying to push for or something which we, 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 we keep, we keep doing these little small developments. Again, we, we're just in the middle now of, of completing the, uh, tourism facility. It's beautiful facility. I think it's built in the wrong place. I believe it's the wrong facility. It should have all been as a holistic project, and it could have been phased and part of it. Now it's a separate identity on its own, which is, just creates enormous amounts of issues at a later date. Um, because when you, you know, when you redevelop a piece of property and you have a piece of it, that's, that's, um, um, uh, been piecemealed into it, i- it just always creates an issue over the, over the time. Um, and, and again, we've got a huge area next door to us with a school. Um, and the school is clearly, as, as we've heard here, it's being well-used now. Um, so there will have to be some improvements to the, uh, to the new school area. So I, I just think that, you know, we're, i- it, it's, it's not about a village office. It's about a village town, town hall, for, it would be the better way to, to put it. It should be looked at in an entire picture. Again, that's, and I'm gonna push strong for that.
Uh, and you know what? I'm not seeing that that's not an option there. I, I think maybe I'm not getting that point across. I think the core is the fact that three of the counselors are saying, but part of that, the village office is important. It may not be part of a complex, but at the same time, you just threw out the school. I know Port Clemence on High De Guay, their municipal office is joint with the, the elementary school. So, uh, those are all options. They could be part of a recreation facility like Tumblr Ridge. So for sure, this is not indicating that this is a standalone office. If it makes sense to make a joint, you're gonna get that first. And I think that's where I'm going is the staff are gonna give you options, not just here's the plans, let's build it, and here's the money.
But I think you're, but you're looking at it though in the, in the way of a village office. I understand where you're going.
I, I think, cause that's the key here. And what I'm hearing is that's, they wanna make sure it's part of it.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't believe that that is the key, because the staff have already said that that's not the key. So, uh, I don't know where council is coming from.
Well, if it isn't, I would expect Tyson to put that in the report.
I, we should be planning for a new village center though. That's what should be up there.
Any other comments? Counselor Vital?
Thank you, Ron. I think, um, your session tomorrow with staff, um, that perhaps that that's, that's a, uh, a, a good place to to have that discussion, to ensure that staff is clear on, um, I do, I do see a new village office as a priority, but I do agree with Counselor Fazio that perhaps larger plans could be included in that over the next, say, five, ten, fifteen years. So curious to, you know, find out the result of, uh, your discussions tomorrow with staff. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. So is there a desire to change this at all for, and as well as the goal? If I have a majority, then I'll do it. If not, then we're gonna move to the next one.
I'm not pleased with it anyway, try.
Okay. Um, what about the goal? Provide for the needs of a growing community.
I don't, I don't actually like the whole the whole action. To me, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
Okay. If there's any recommendations, I'm just gonna throw them out to the table, and, and at this point, if a majority wants it, we'll switch it. Counselor Fazio?
Yeah, I think that needs of a growing community is just what I repeated a few minutes ago. That we can do a phased in
Right.
complexes to deal with that. You start with one and you work your way through as funding is available to deal with these sort of things.
So you're good with this?
I'm fine with that, yes.
Okay. Counselor Jackson?
Yeah. My concern is that I understand where the mayor's coming from. But for me, that's just kicking the cat down the road. We have a limited financial resources here. And while we might like to see everything that you're, we're talking about, the reality isn't that. You know, if we don't start looking after what is falling apart now, it's gonna cost ten times more. That's just the reality of it, and provide the needs for growing community, for, you know, that's a generic term. And we should be able to live with that and provide for what we can in the future. But you, you know, you can't keep putting it off. It costs more.
Yep.
Yeah.
So are you good with this then, the way it is, as well as the goal? I guess I'm looking for consensus here. Okay. So with that, I think we're just gonna move to the rest respectfully. I understand the mayor's comments, and then they're certainly gonna be taken in to consideration and discussion tomorrow about maybe a much larger idea in terms of the village office. Whether it's realistic or not, it's something council down the road's gonna have to consider. So the next one is number three, sustainable, sustainable development. We said we want attainable and affordable housing. We want to investigate lead development and develop a streetscape plan. Why? What do we hope to accomplish? What's our goal here?
Place we wanna call home.
Thoughts, comments?
Now, if I, if I may, if I look at that, to me, it's a planning issue. When I look at that, we're given direction here on affordable housing, which we, that's provincial or federal.
Mm-hmm.
Which can get grants for, investigate the lead, that's something that could be done through the building code, I assume. Uh, and then the bottom one is the the light here is terrible, development.
Develop a streetscape.
And streetscape, well, that's, that's the wording we used when we first started to through the R M I, begin the first two blocks on the front street was a streetscape.
Okay.
Like, that's, that's a, a word that, that includes the streets, the trees, planters, the benches, or whatever you wanna refer to. It's an overall plan, and that's why it was called the streetscape.
Yes.
I think it's pretty, it's broad, but I think it's something that can be worked with.
Okay. So is this the goal that we're achieving by doing these?
Sustainable development?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, 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 a place we want to call home.
Well, we all wanna call it home. We all, we all do call it home, as, we all call it home, well, I do, call it home anyway.
Yeah.
I've done since I lived here, so that, that hasn't changed.
Okay. But what we're identifying is goals for each of these now. So this one, sustainable development. If we achieve this, it's so that we have a place to call home.
Yeah.
Okay. Good with that? Mister Jackson? I'm just looking for nods.
No, um, sustainable means something that we can continue to sustain in the future.
Mm-hmm.
So whatever we, we develop, we have to have the ability to, to keep updating it and keep, keep, keep it going.
Yes.
Uh, development is a different thing altogether. They're really in a way two different things.
Okay.
Once you have development, then sustainability is the ability to provide the services, like the water and the sewer and all this sort of thing. Uh, and to me, that's, you know, your goal has to be able to have the ability to, to do that, to have the cash in order to pay to keep sustainable. Every time you plant a flower bed, somebody has to go out there and weed it and keep it going.
Right.
So development brings cost.
Yes.
And that's what you have to be able to do, is sustain that cost as it goes forward.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, it's lovely to, a, a place to call home, that, that's good. Uh, that has to be sustained.
Yes. So are you good with that as the goal? I guess is the question.
Sorry. I mean, it, it, it's a very, very nice saying.
It is.
Yeah.
It is, yeah.
Um, okay. And again, cause I don't wanna put words in your mouth. Right? This is in your, what you're thinking to the community. Why are we doing this? Because we wanna have, uh, want Harrison to be a place to call home.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna move on. At the end, I'm gonna pull it all together, and then we're gonna re-catch it our head one more time. So number four, healthy, livable community. Our priorities underneath that were a seniors' housing slash resource center, maybe even slash village office. Parks and trails master plan, investigate a recreation facility. Like, there's lots of joint things here down the road that are options. If we achieve this, what is the goal? What will we have accomplished? What are we trying to accomplish by identifying this as important, and these are the things underneath it? Counselor Vital?
To promote and enhance a healthy lifestyle for all ages.
Well said.
Comments? I see one head nod. Looks pretty good. Counselor Fazio?
That suits me. Health, safety, lifestyle, it's all part of a community.
I wasn't the last one this smooth.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm gonna move on. I love it. I hope you were working on this one too. Environmental protection, number five, we said, excuse me, develop a climate action and mitigation plan. Environmental review of the Miami River and develop an action plan for a portion of the lagoon. Now, what is the goal? We can wordsmith these in a bit, but what is the goal? We know what we want here, um, in achieving this. What do we hope to accomplish? What's our goal?
Restoring the environment.
Okay.
That's for one of it.
Do the staff have any idea?
Restoring it and preserving it for future generations, or environment for future generations.
It's not bad. It's pretty good, just coming off the top. Cause this isn't easy. I'll be dead honest with you. Some people walk out of here and just your brain's fried from thinking about everything like this. What do you think of that? Looks good?
It's good. It, it doesn't quite cover it all in my mind, but it's as good as I can think of.
Counselor Vital?
I actually really like the but I'm wondering if, uh, perhaps the word, uh, sort of like future protection, rather than just restore and preserve, we wanna protect it. Just, just a thought. Thank you.
Protect over preserve.
That doesn't matter to me, but I just don't know how to kind of incorporate the other part, which was the, uh, sorry, my eyes here, which is the lagoon.
Well, develop an action plan for a portion of the lagoon.
Cause there, but there we don't want to restore, necessarily restore it. Yeah, so. Restore. I'm good.
Just wanna go home. Okay, good. Counselor Fazio, you good with that?
My grandchildren will be looked after. Future generations, thank you.
You know what? That's a really good comment, because I think that's where we have to see why we're doing these things is down the road. So good. It's funny, we really got our groove here at the end. Okay, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna walk through. We don't have to worry about those last sheets. I kinda moved them up here and added them here. Um, so the majority, we did the SWOT exercise this morning, so if you wanna look at the agenda there on the side. Um, we, we did the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to get your mind thinking of, of those things that are challenging our communities and those things that are our community, and those things that are challenging from beyond the borders. The, the stuff that's out of our control, control. But a lot of times we affect. I mean, we talk about advocacy, you know, when we go to the province, we're not in charge of education. We're not in charge of health, we're not even in charge of housing. But we have an effect on it, and that very much falls on the role of the elected official to ensure that the needs of your community are still addressed, even in areas that you may not have direct control over. So with that exercise, we then went into the vision statement. And here, our vision statement was, and again, this is your opportunity to rethink these things. A residential and resort community focused on maintaining an attractive and inviting village core. A strong commitment to maintaining the scenic qualities, the environment, and quality of life. And we just sort of tweaked what And we just sort of tweaked what was in the official community plan. Are you guys good with that? Okay. Then we went into your mission statement. Um, and this is what do you do? What do we do as an organization? And we initially started out by saying, well, here's a bunch of stuff we do. Core services, small community, attractive, positive economic development. Live, work and play, maintain strong connection, economic, attractive, positive economic development. Maintain strong connection with indigenous neighbors. And then we decided to park it. But then along came this wonderful mission that said, the village of Harrison Hot Springs will provide exceptional leadership to its residents, businesses and visitors through partnerships and the provision of effective and community focused services. Is that still good? I like it. Yeah. Okay. And then finally, I challenged you into what are your values? In other words, what are the things that are important to you in delivering these services? And your response was respect, integrity, accountability, positivity, collaborative and communicative. I'm gonna put in good communication. Are you good with those? Okay. So those are the things that will be in the front of your strategic plan. That's going to tell the community what you believe in, where your vision is and what you do. Then we're going to get into the five areas that you've identified as your prior, our strategic priorities. And those are first, safety, our public safety. Second is organizational development, and I know we had a bit of tripping on that. Three, sustainable development. Four, health, healthy, livable community. And five was environmental protection. Underneath each of those, as we go through them, the first one you said under public safety was secure second evacuation route. The second was a fire smart community designation and three is flood protection. Are we good with those? Okay. Under organizational development, we had planning for a new village office and we had update master plans.
No.
I knew we weren't completely on board with that one, but Tyson.
I'm looking for a compromise here. Um, there was a, a thought that we could maybe entertain a kind of word change, not strictly to the village office, but to say that, um, we conduct a facility review or look at, uh, additional, uh, facility options or something like that. I know council was pretty, uh, firm on what they wanted to say there, but I'm just giving other options.
Okay. When you say facility, are you talking about the village office? Okay.
That would include village office. It could be a community center. It could be like, if you're talking about a, conducting a facility review, we could definitely, that would wrap everything. It could be, um, as big or as small as, as we want. And that, that kind of brings it back up to that forty thousand foot level. And then, uh, gives, um, staff options to, um, kind of look at, um, different options and values and, you know, benefits, that kind of thing.
Okay. So throw the wording out again that you're suggesting, just so council has that to.
We could, uh, look at, um, conduct a, uh, village, uh, facility review.
Village facility. Counsel, good, oh. Would counsel like to see that replace what you have? Okay. Counselor Jackson, I think in both cases, we're not throwing out the village office nor the idea of the joint, you know, when I look at this. There's options here, even, you know, to have joint facilities. There isn't a place in this province that hasn't jointly added their municipal. In fact, Kitimat's is on the top of the mall. So you gotta go by the dollar store to get into Kitimat's village or district office. Joint facilities are certainly not out and they, and they can tend to be affordable. And I think what Tyson's doing here is just saying, let's look at a joint village facility, but certainly at the core in there is ensuring that we reviewed the village office.
Not so much the, the intent of the, um, language change isn't to make it a, a combination facility. It's either we look at a new office or we look at it, you know, it's, it's very, it's not as prescriptive. It gives us a few options. That's all.
Okay. For clarity. Thank you. Counselor Fassio?
Yeah, thank you. Um, again, pretty much what I said 20 minutes ago. That we, 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 we do this in phases. We ask the staff to come forward like, uh, the CIO has just stated with options. But it includes a, um, a, um, a joint, a, a larger facility, but we do this as funding is available. We have funding in place.
Yes.
To move forward. So they will, I, I would hope they will give us options and phase it in over so many years. You have to start somewhere. And like Counselor Jackson said, the more you procrastinate and leave things to be done later, the larger the cost becomes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Vital?
Yeah.
I think I would be okay with that. I've rethought it, but, uh, conduct a village facilities, I think we should encompass more review, but I also would like to see and set priorities.
Think of that. It, it doesn't nail anything to the wall. And I agree, that one is maybe a little more focused. And this certainly doesn't throw the baby out with the bathwater thing here. I don't think we're losing anything by going down this road. Counselor Jackson?
Personally, I think by doing that, you're throwing it down the road.
Okay.
To me, it's something that's going to be a long, long time away. When you're planning for a new village office, it might be that we can't do it. This specifically here will mean we'll probably never do it. Cause once it gets too broad, then the economics comes into it and we don't really get the, the priority that we want. But I don't support that.
Okay. Any other thoughts? We're gonna. So who would like to stay with the current one that says planning for a new village office? One, two, and the new wording? One, two? I know you were trying to help. You guys, you know, if you want my honest opinion, I don't think either of these throw anything down. What I'm also seeing is the idea that Tyson's trying to say, you've got a bunch of other facilities. And if it makes sense to look at them collectively, because you can get some funding for seniors housing, well, then there's economies of scale there that you've got some infrastructure already. And maybe that's the first phase to get the village office. I don't know. But I'm just simply saying a combined facility is still an option. It doesn't throw out the fact that it still ends up being a standalone. But I feel like we're just dividing the wording up a bit. Tyson?
Yeah, I agree. Um, I, it's six, one, one half and a dozen another. If, uh, whatever council, uh, wishes, we can certainly go either way. But, uh, I, I would think our, our biggest challenge here as a, as a community is going to be the, the funding options. Because like Mayor Wood said, if we did a combined facility, we'd be looking at five, six, seven, eight million dollars. Now, that's going to be a, a, a challenge, um, you know, for funding sources. And even if we were borrowing, you know, we, we could, um, certainly, if there was going to be just a standalone office, we could plan to have it for, uh, uh, you know, and maybe in addition, um, in the future, that kind of thing. But, uh, it, it's tough to say. I mean, I support either direction. I, I get the, uh, the idea that, of what council's trying to say. But I, I'm just trying to find a little bit more of, uh, um, common ground here because like you say, there are facilities, are, are, some of our facilities are starting to get fairly old. Um, a prime example is the arts building. That's, that's, you know, a, a building that's fairly close to the same age as the village office. Well, not quite as old, but um, those types of things. And it, the facility, uh, review could include other components that we own as well.
Little more background? Yes. Again, hearing that, are we still set to two or is anyone leaning more towards this one or that? Anyone change their view? Now, I never like forcing anything down anyone's throat because you have to adopt this. So can somebody suggest wording that's more comfortable? You almost thought you were gonna get out of here pain free, didn't you?
Yeah.
All right, Counselor Fassio. Yes.
You know, we, 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 we have a competent staff.
Yes.
And whatever type of project we, we, we bring up, they always bring forward alternatives.
Absolutely.
And that's where it boils down to.
Yes.
The price for the office is going to mean, I'll use an example, it's a public, it's nothing secret that the Tourism Harrison got a grant of a million, million dollars. Twenty seven hundred square feet, elevator offices, a very, very large area for their museum portion of that. That's a perfect example of a, maybe an example of a building that the village could build. They wouldn't, they wouldn't need all the fancy stuff that's going into a museum, obviously. But it could accommodate up to probably forty, maybe more people in the chambers.
Yeah.
Plus you got your offices, uh, and room for expansion. So, but on top of that, in three years' time, or we can now apply for funding in two or three years' time. I mean, this happened if, um, oh, I'll say maybe three years ago, could have been where we did have a, a grant in place to build a office and, um, complex for the First Nations cultural part of it. Plus a, a smaller meeting or space for, um, uh, the, uh, folks to meet and everything else. We didn't get the funding unfortunately for it. That was, that was going to be built on the, on the vacant lot. So that didn't come about. But these things, again, I will repeat myself, we're looking at long-term here. That's a strategic plan. They can be phased in. You know, and like, like you said this morning, in four years' time, a new council will come board. I'm interested in what Leo and Mickey said. We're gonna do this. We're gonna change that. That happens all the time.
Yes.
You know, so I think the direction I would give to the, our staff is, we have a plan here. Come up with costings for a village office, plus give us options, look into the future, like, uh, the CIO said, for a, um, a, a larger facilities to accommodate the, um, whatever, for the public exercise or whatever. We don't, I mean, I did put this down as a, as a, a way of looking, what are we going to do with this village? This, this municipal hall?
Yeah.
It costs us, it, it's a ball and chain around our necks. Cost wise, compare what we get in revenue.
Yep, good point. And, and that falls in this wording here.
Yeah, that would be something they could come up with, what, what they've seen written down later on. But I think, I, I believe in our staff can come up with options for us.
Yeah.
And, and pricing to see how we can move forward in this whenever this comes to council.
Okay. So Counselor Fassio, are you in favor of this wording then? Okay.
Sorry, I just want to, uh, remind council that the petition was brought to council on this exact project about five years ago. It was, it was endorsed by almost every resident in this village to not proceed with this project. This project was perceived to be some sort of cultural hub facility, which was nothing more than a fancy village office with a big council chambers. The residents made it quite clear, council still proceeded and they wanted to carry through with it at the date. And the grant was pulled. And I will say that behind the scenes, I am one of the advocates to pull that funding. Um, that would easily, um, I've got years of management experience in the facilities design and management division for the city of Vancouver. So when I hear Counselor Fassio here try to explain how monies work and budgets work when it comes to facilities, you know, it's in, I, I, I'm just shocked that they're still continuing to push for something like this. This is a, this is a huge cost to the, uh, to the taxpayers. Never mind the, uh, life cycle regeneration costs that are incurred by that for every year. The maintenance cost of this thing here is easily another hundred thousand dollars just to maintain something like this. We're going down the wrong road. And, uh, when they say that it's going to get cheaper if we do it now, uh, absolutely not. It's better to plan. And, and this is exactly what the strategic planning should be. And I think that the, uh, the chief administrative officer's proposal here, um, which is in front of us is the appropriate way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fassio.
With respect to the Mayor Wood's comments, not quite correct.
Counselor Fassio?
My twenty seven years of, uh, service to this community, I've been involved with more projects and all these.
Counselor Fassio, you're out of order. It was actually Counselor Jackson who was in communication and discussion with Mr. Poole and you interrupted, sir. Thank you.
You know, I wasn't involved in the, what, uh, the mayor respectfully said. However, interest rates in those days were one percent. They could have financed this project over the next twenty, if they chose to over the next twenty years, uh, with giveaway money. Inflation's running at six and seven, eight percent. So the moral of the story is that if we don't go ahead and do something now, it's just going to be more expensive in the future. That's just the way the market works. And while I understand what people were opposed to, if you go right now and you talk about the facility that the mayor would like to see, that's going to create a real cost with interest rates probably harboring around four and five percent. So with your, with your actual monthly cost is gonna be much, much greater, which is gonna cause a huge tax increase for the people. That's why we want to target what we're targeting, and I think it's time right now to stop the rhetoric and move on.
All right, so the question now sits in front of you again. Are we focusing on adjust the village office, or are we looking at broader options here?
Broader options.
I'm still believing there might be two and two in the room. Um. Without getting prescriptive, I'm gonna give you my thoughts on this one. I don't think, I'm not sure we could say that it's gonna be more expensive if we consider a larger facility, because there might be, I'm gonna throw the example out, if I look at Port Clements and say, if that school next year does something, you may want to consider partnering with the school district. I'm not saying that's what you're gonna do, but it's an option. If you find out that you can get funding for seniors housing, the District of Mission, but now the City of Mission did the same thing, if you recall, at their recreation center. We were able to put our seniors facility in there, that got us the seniors facility, and it was funded in there. So those are the options that we're assuming at this point are gonna be costly because we're paying for them all, but they might actually help us fund these. I'm just saying, one of these is just saying, let's look at all those options, including a standalone, or what I'm hearing is phasing in. So you may say, yeah, let's eventually put it all together, but you know, the first part we're gonna do is build that village office, but it's gonna be on a piece of land that we may eventually add a recreation facility. I don't know, but I think, I think we're kind of circling the same idea. We might be too stuck on the wording. This is certainly a bit broader, but it doesn't throw out the idea of building a village office and just planning it and going ahead. You will make that decision when you see the report. That's just my thoughts on it. Do the rest of you agree? Counselor Fassio.
Conduct village facilities, review and set priorities for village office and ongoing projects as funding becomes available.
Okay, say that again.
Conduct a village facilities, review and set priorities. Uh, village office. And other facilities as funding becomes available. Thank you.
Thoughts? Mayor Wood?
Going down the wrong path again. We should be looking strategically, holistically. You can't be looking at just the village office and then be thinking about money. That's just not how it works in facility construction. You can't just keep adding on the cost of doing that. It's just, it's just, it just isn't there. As as uh Mr. Cool stated, I mean, I remember one of the last projects I worked on there, so the fire hall is put in with the uh with the low income housing. Who would ever thought of fire hall? The fire hall was basically built almost free. So it's got nothing to do with looking at, at when funding becomes available. It's just that we should be looking at it as a holistic picture, period.
Other comments? Counselor Jackson.
Think we're just going around in circles.
We are a bit.
And really, we're not serving any, we've spent too much time on this. Also, I could support that one because I know the realities of it.
I uh I'll be honest, all the wording we've seen here today doesn't throw any of the options out. I'm hoping I can just make it palatable enough for you guys to be comfortable to adopt it into your plan. You know, um, you could stop this here, conduct a village facility review and set a pri- and set priority for a village office and other facilities. This is a given. I would never recommend to our council to build something we couldn't fund. And that's the next thing is there should be money in every decision you make. When you approve something, the thing in your head should be, did we tie some money into it? And if you didn't, then you shouldn't be approving it. I'm saying that in front of Scott because I hope he believes in what I'm saying is, because he's gotta find the money. Right? You do a decision and you haven't tied the money in, that's not a good move. So this is given to me. If you're gonna build something, it better be funded. Counselor Vital.
I think that goal is a very good compromise on um the two points that we seem to be uh hung up on. Um, I like your idea of eliminating funding. Funding resources or revenue streams or whatever, I I'm I'm happy with uh this last revision. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor strongly opposed.
With this wording?
Absolutely.
Counselor Jackson? Counselor Fassio? Okay, at this point, I believe it's better than that one in your opinion. Maybe not quite as good, but probably our best joint effort at trying to define this. We're gonna keep the as funding comes available in there? Doesn't hurt either way. Like I said, with staff, I think it's just a given that I would never recommend they don't tell you what the money involved in something is. All right, so we're gonna move to priority action number three, which was sustainable development. We said we want attainable and affordable housing. We want to investigate, investigate lead development and develop a streetscape plan. And our goal was because we want a place we want to call home. Should we broaden that a bit and just say, make Harrison Hot Springs a place? It seems a little like an incomplete sentence or something.
Perfect.
So to make Harrison Hot Springs a place called home.
Sure. I'm okay with that, yes?
Make Harrison Hot Springs a place we want to call home.
I'll change the word uh make to maintain. Because you can't make it, but you can maintain it.
Oh, to maintain Harrison Hot Springs as a place we want to call home. Is that still Hallmark, you know? Okay. So the number four was healthy, livable community, we we identified as a priority, and we said we'd like seniors housing slash resource center, Parks and Trails master plan, and we might tweak the wording here so it sounds a little better like. But I don't wanna change the intent, and if I do, you will catch it when it comes back to you. Investigate a recreation facility. And we said our goal was to promote and enhance a healthy lifestyle for all ages, and I think that was a kumbaya right across the board with you guys.
Well said.
Number five, environmental protection. Underneath that, we said we want to develop the climate action and mitigation plan. We want to do an environmental review of the Miami River, and we wanted to develop an action plan for a portion of the lagoon. Our goal was to restore and protect the environment for future generations. Okay. Is there anything else without looking at number two again? That you want to tweak? Sorry.
Item two.
Uh, yeah. Um, you guys, I think you've done really well. You've kept it simple enough. I mean, ultimately, your council, you can change things all along the way, but the more you can stick to a plan, and as you dig deeper and you work towards making things happen, that's obviously going to be your challenge, but it's certainly what's gonna bring you together to start getting stuff moving in the community, and I think that's where a lot of you ran and said, we need to start doing stuff. This is a huge message to the staff. They now know what you're thinking, and so you will start to see these departmental plans come forward. We'll talk about those tomorrow. Uh, whether that you have another workshop to go through those, because it might be too much for a meeting. Um, eventually, they need to all start going through the process of council for decision making, et cetera, but once you're happy with what you're doing, you can also go out, you can talk about it publicly. The staff know what you're doing. It just makes tons of sense that everyone's on the same table or platform or whatever. Any other comments? Hearing none, then I'm gonna turn it back over to the mayor. I think we have what we need.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cool. That was uh, that was a good experience. I call for adjournment. Do I have mover moved by Counselor Fassio, seconded by Counselor Jackson? Call of question, all in favor? Nobody oppose? We are adjourned unanimously.
Thank you.